Well, let's get started. We have a few, you know, the pledge and a few preliminaries to get through before we start this special meeting. And there is an echo, Chris.
We have an echo.
To review the single school plans for, I'm having a brain, thank you, for six of our elementary schools. But first, if everyone would stand for the pledge. This is my third today. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eva Nyer has graciously.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Eva. So if we need any translation, Eva is available. But right now, we have, we have no audience, so I'll try and alert you if I think I, yes, thank you. And we have headsets for the hearing impaired. Once again, I don't think an issue at this point. And no public comment slips. So we can begin with the main event. And I think, honestly, I think everybody's a little, I don't know, buoyant from this morning. I still feel the effects of that really wonderful assembly.
That was indeed a good morning, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
At Santa Barbara Junior High. Well, I'd like to introduce this, and I'll have Robin speak in just a moment to our format for this afternoon. This afternoon is the first of four rounds on single plans for student achievement presented by school principals. The single plans are really a compilation of all of the efforts of the school to meet the needs of their special populations. And these are students who may be economically disadvantaged, who may be low-performing students, or maybe English learners. There are a number of categorical programs addressed, and really, the underlying question is, do we have achievement efforts at the school and initiatives that will make a substantive difference for these students? So keeping that in mind and putting it in that context, I'd like to introduce Robin Swawski, our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education. And Robin will tell us about how our presentations will be running today and the format for them.
Okay, thank you. We have allotted about half an hour per school, and the principals have prepared their executive summary. That's very consistent, and I know you've got a copy of the format for that. So they'll be addressing the data and all of that for their school. And so they have planned to take 10 to 15 minutes talking, so that there's a good 15 minutes for questions. I wanted to, we talk together, I guess upfront, I should, should say that the elementary principals in particular are spending their time together very differently this year.
The, the, the meeting room, the conference room, was being used, so Carrie and Julie didn't set up the board tables the way they usually do, so we're looking for pads and paper.
I didn't want to start too much before Dr. Noel got situated, so.
I don't mean to be rude.
You're not rude at all. You need to be prepared.
I don't take notes, I follow.
Okay, are we set? Yeah.
Now you've got the secret.
That was good.
And I thought you were bringing us into the next century.
And then you took us back out again.
Yeah, now you're going back to paper and pencil.
Nine nights, and I have these staff guys that sit over there behind their screens. And I'm not, it's my time now.
Okay.
Okay, as I was saying, the elementary principals, many of whom are sitting here today, or I guess half, are spending our time together very differently this year. We meet monthly, as we always have, but the time we spend together is very, very different. In fact, I wanted to talk about that at an upcoming board meeting and a board brief, about the leadership, the different way we're dealing with leadership and building capacity. One of the ways is that we share our best practices all the time. These principals really know about each other's schools way more than they have in the past, and we talk about what's working. We look at, you know, student work. We went, our first meeting, we went and got to observe two model ELD lessons, and then we talked about, with the lens of student engagement, what's going on in those classrooms, what are the best practices, so that we can use that to help build the leadership and address issues at the site. So, right off the bat, the, these presentations today, the principals know a lot about each other's schools. So, we talked about how I could kind of preface this for you, so that you would know that district kinds of issues that maybe address all of the schools, I'll be writing notes, and I can address those later, so that the principals have time to really dig into their school, so that we don't have to spend a lot of time on asking those. I know that's happened in the last two years since I've been here. So I will be cognizant of that and write down the district kinds of things. I guess I want you to know that all the school plans, as you would expect, are aligned to the district plan, particularly with the professional development and the initiatives. You'll hear a lot about English language development, because those are the subgroup of students who, in most cases, we really need to target very specific instruction and get our achievement up to a much greater level. And all of the schools are working on that, along with all of the other kids. So you'll hear about that. You may hear about AVID. If not, it's certainly in the professional development plans, because all of the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade teachers are involved in the AVID training. If you walk into classrooms, you'll start to see AVID strategies, as the teachers are learning them and using, incorporating that into the classrooms, in the fourth, fifth, and sixth grades. Again, each school is very, very individual, and the context in which they work, given the student population, the parent group, the teaching staff they have, all of those things that go into building a school community, they're so different, each one of them. And so the different best practices that we share in our meetings and with each other and looking at research, it may look very differently at the different sites. And so I know you'll see that today, and they'll explain some of that. Common challenges we have, again, we've, and I know this isn't any big surprise, but I just feel like I need to note it, that getting budget material on time, the information and some of the data, has again been a bit of a challenge. It's not an excuse, but I just, you know, there may be questions, there may be things in the budgets that aren't completely right up to the moment, because, you know, they've tried as hard as they can. So I just, I need to say that, just because that, that may come up or maybe not. But that's still a challenge, and I know we're all working on that. Let's see, I think I've covered everything that we talked about, but I just, you know, want to say, this is really a great opportunity for you to actually dig into each school. So I don't want to take any more time explaining that and let you get on with it. So the first school we have is Santa Barbara Community Academy, a school of choice in our district, and Amy Alzine is the principal.
Thank you. Well, I first want to say, I just feel it's an honor to be able to present to you our school, and I just thank you for this opportunity. We had a great, exciting day today, too. We had the super colon come to the academy and learn all about the digestive system. And I had a third grader, and they said, "School is so fun, I love school," and that's what I want our students to hear.
Amy, I didn't announce that one to the board the other night. My apologies. This was the super colon, it was the walk through the big colon.
Yes, and they learned, and I was really impressed with their presentation. It was great. So let me tell you a little bit about our school, yes. We have 300 students. Percent of our students are English language learners, or 36 percent. That's gone up from 30 percent. Number of teachers, 14. 82 percent Hispanic, that's also gone up from 71 percent, or 79 percent. White, 10 percent, and other, 8 percent. So that's just our demographic information. Our school-wide focus areas, of course, is our English language learners and English language arts, and students that are below proficient in English language arts and math is our main focus areas. Our overview of our data analysis, if you compare our English language arts scores from last, last year, the previous year, they are pretty, we stayed pretty stagnant, they're pretty similar. They did go down a little bit. What hurt us is our English language learner population. It went from 27.4 percent of our students proficient and advanced to 16 percent. And I know you want to know why that happened. I'll tell you the same thing that I told Dr. Sarfis and, and Robin, is that I really wasn't surprised when, being the principal last year of the kindergarten through third grade and being a split campus, I did, I was able to see a little bit what was happening in the upper grades, and it was very much alarming to me. And I was very much concerned about what's happening with our English language learners. And when I found out that our students weren't formally assessed by administrator, I brought that up to personnel, because I want, it was important to me that they be, that their assess, formal evaluations be done by administrator, and they were redone. But with that said, what killed us was, in fifth and sixth grade, not one student was proficient or advanced English language learner. So that's going to obviously bring your scores dramatically down, and that's exactly what happened. And grade second through fourth, they did very well, but it was our, our fifth and sixth grade population, students, that, that did go down. Also, I met with Davis Hayden for a while, for quite some time, so thank you for spending a lot of time with me to review our scores. And we discovered that we have a lot of FEPs at the academy, twice as many than any other school in our district. So we went a little FEP crazy before I was administrator, and now we're, we're paying for it, because now our English language learners, the percentage that we have, are low EL students instead of our middle-of-the-road, high-EL students. So we're left bringing those EL students, or lower EL students, up to that proficient/advanced level. And being a smaller school, where all we needed was just six more students to bump us up to that level where we needed to meet, that's all we needed was six, that makes a big difference. And so, for example, last year, in second grade's class had 17 EL students, and they also had 15 FEP students. So if just six of those FEP students were EL students, and they met that proficiency level, we would have met our target goal. And we're, in talking with Davis, he said, unfortunately, you're stuck with this problem until they graduate from sixth grade, because they were classified as FEPs. And also, this year's second grade class has 15 EL students and eight FEP students. So again, that I, since I've been the administrator, I've been sure to make sure, take the district's stance in our kindergarten and first grade students, we just have one FEP student. So I'm, I'm confident that that shift will change, along with the practices that will change in fifth and sixth grade, the, the, going over the accountability that I have for our teachers that's set in place in fifth and sixth grade. I know that turnaround will change, but it's just going to take a little bit of time. So that, I hope, explains a little bit, and I'll go over what exactly we're doing throughout the plan to address those issues later on.
I just wanted to interrupt you as long.
Yes.
Just one moment, and it sounds like you have not even considered the temptation of playing the "don't redesignate" game.
Meaning?
Well, I've heard about it, not in our district, certainly, but just, don't, don't redesignate for English learners as fully English proficient so quickly. And it's a strategy which you just explained.
Right, right.
It would benefit you, and I'm commending you for not considering it.
Thank you.
For not, for being forthright about it.
Thank you. So in addressing, so that's our English language, and addressing the math issue, and doing my research with that, again, I go back to the fifth and sixth grade, they weren't implementing Saxon math along with the hardcore math. And if you look at the scores on the graph, I have a graph on page 15, it shows that second through fourth grade, or, or second through fifth grade scores were the same as last year. In some cases, they were even better than last year's scores. But if you look at the sixth grade, they were, the, last year, they were 64 percent were proficient or advanced in, I'm sorry, the year before, they were 64 percent proficient advanced, and last year, they dropped down to 27 percent. So that, again, hurt us dramatically. So, so what I did, I sat down with the teachers, I said, this, what exactly are you doing to differentiate your instruction? I want to make sure that Saxon math is also being incorporated with the hardcore math. When, I was just, my heart just sank when I met with one of the fifth grade teachers. I said, "Where's, where's your Saxon math?" And they said, "Well, we were told to throw it out." So, yeah, so I had to dig it, find it somewhere, and now it's being used. And again, it's just the accountability that, for those teachers and what's happening at that grade level. And I'll address what other things that we're, we're doing, activities that we're doing to bring those scores up to. So some school profile highlights some great things about our school. We're a year-round school. I, I know that the board is supportive of our year-round school, and I thank you for that. I really believe that it closes the achievement gap, our intercession breaks, too, where it gives us an opportunity to have our intercession school, where we service 200 of our 300 students during intercession in some form or another. And so our students are always in school, they're always engaged, and I just, I thank you for that, so thank you. We're also a uniform school, as you know, parent involvement is a requirement, school of choice, and our core knowledge curriculum is essential to our school, and, and closing the achievement cap with the high content and vocabulary that, that the curriculum provides. When you, as, not necessarily all of you, because you're a different board than when the school started, but when the, the boards started the academy, it began with a Spanish program and a PE program that the board supported, and I was very much in favor of that, and I know our staff was. So we brought back the Spanish program this year, and we started at kindergarten through second grade, and we're going to expand upon that each year, so it'll go K3, K4, so eventually goes K6, with a Spanish teacher for twice a week, for 30 minutes a week, they get Spanish. We also have a PE program that provides release time to the, for the teachers to clap, to meet, and with their grade-level teams and collaborate and go over data analysis. And we brought a music program again, and our kindergarten through third grade students receive music, all third grade student, 30 minutes once a week, and they're, they're using the core knowledge curriculum, which is great, because there's already a curriculum set for, with a music component to it. And all third grade students will be, are learning how to play the recorder. And then our, of course, as you know, our fourth through sixth grade students receive music that you support as a board. So, of, all of our students are receiving music. So I hope you can see in the plan that we're really trying to keep a child-centered, a well-rounded education for our students in, in all areas. And I'm very much in support of extending the school day, as you can tell with the after-school programs, but also have before-school programs. Last year, we had the before-school music program, we've continued it this year with a donation that we received. And then we also started a before-school program, Camina Corre Comingo Program, as you can tell, I'm not fluent in Spanish. But that's for all of our families, and they, it's diabetes prevention, and our parents are invited, and our staff is invited, and our students invited, and they walk or run to or take a park, and then they come back. So they run around the park for a little bit, and then they come back, and it's been great to see some of our staff take part of that, too. So we're really trying to promote healthy lifestyles and healthy living, too. And our after-school enrichment classes, when I started at the academy, also started our after-school program. We're the only school in the district that runs our own after-school program, and I've restructured it this year, a little bit different. We receive money, the uncapped resource, second through ninth grade retention and at-risk funds, so all of our students that are at risk are in the after-school program, and that goes until 5:30. The first hour of the program is strictly homework help, homework tutoring. Then they have a short recess, and then they have a class. So that teacher, the, they have, they have a music class, an art class, a science class, photography class, these are just some of the classes that they have, and the teacher rotates monthly. So let's say a student really likes art, but maybe they're not really into sports, but you have to, they get cycled out, so they have to get exposed to one area or another. So it's a great, it's a great program. We keep the ratio at a 12-to-1 ratio, too, so it's really, it's a low ratio, and so the students get a lot of remedial help during this time. And I know our parents are very much in support of this, too, and that also helps alleviate a little bit of the traffic tension I know over at the Locombra Campus. So again, our fall-in intercession school, we had, this was our first year holding intercession on both campuses, and that was a little bit of a challenge, but it worked, and, and we made it work. And we serviced, again, 200 students during intercession, whether they were in intercession school, or they were in all-day intercession camp from 8:00 to 5:30. So there's options for our families out there, and, and I know they appreciate that, too, so they're not just home during that time. We are, we're very much into our parents being involved in their child's education, so having all-school events is definitely part of that, you know, doing physical picnics and enchilada dinners and all-school Olympics, and we had a great turnout today at the colon, you know, super colon, so just getting our parents involved in their child's education. We have a great community outreach. I, I just, I don't know if you know, I'm a Westmont alum, and I'm in constant communication with Westmont and how they can get involved with our school. And Andrew Mull, and the Chair of the Liberal Studies Department at Westmont, is bringing his, his entire class, he's teaching a cultural diversity class at Westmont, and he's bringing this class once a week to another third grade class, and they're working on a one-on-one writing project together. And how great that is for the students' benefit, and also for the teacher, because you know how difficult it is to teach writing. As a teacher, you want to be with every student. Well, now, every student has a one-on-one tutor during that hour, a Westmont tutor, and they work on a writing project together. And then, at the end of the quarter, they're going to go up to Westmont and tour the Westmont and have lunch with the students. So that'll be a great opportunity and, and get them excited about college. So I'm hoping to do something similar in the future with City College and UCSB, too, and getting them involved. We are a partnership with Pilgrim's Terrace, it's in, where our students are PIM pals with the elderly over there, and so they're once a, we, once a month, PIM pals, and they go over to Pilgrim's Terrace, our older students do, and they meet their PIM pal, and so it's another writing opportunity, but it's also a community outreach to Pilgrim's Terrace. And then we're, we're, today also, after-school, Safe Routes to School Distributed, for example, helmets for our students, and they have a great program, so working with Safe Routes to School, and, and I know they offer a bike class that we're working on next, next month for our students, a two-week bike class, bike and safety class, too. So when our students, when we do move over there and they do bike to school, that they'll have that class already. Actions that I'm taking to promote supportive school-wide patterns, every parent that started with the academy this year, I required them, I said, I told our office manager, they can enroll until they meet with me, they need to have a pre-conference with me. I just want to let them know what our school's about, I want them to know what our, our parent expectations are, as well as our student/teacher expectations. So I go over with them our core knowledge sequence, so they see how the curriculum builds upon the grade level, so they see what they learn in kindergarten, how it's really important that they stay with us for kindergarten through sixth grade. I also go over with them this book, what your first grader, no, there's a series of books, that they need to purchase this book, or they can also get the book for free by just attending to ELAC meetings, or PTA meetings, or Site Council meetings, and we have this book for free, as long as they just attend to meetings, they get it. And I just feel it's really important in educating our parents what our school is about and making them a partnership, so they can never say, "Well, I didn't know." I hold monthly principals' coffees, email communication, of course, updating our website and our principals' bulletin. I feel strongly that, as far as my teachers, I want our, our staff meetings to be strictly professional development, so I, I don't, I don't want, for example, access cells to go, looks to be spending 15 minutes talking about access cells at our staff meeting, that goes in the bulletin. So all that information goes into the bulletin. Student rewards for attendance and homework, I did something new this year, is I put, I highlighted the students' names that had perfect attendance and perfect homeworks, and we had a huge assembly after the quarter, and, and the parents, the parents came to the assembly, and it was also in our Thursday newsletter, all, at each grade low, every student's name, and the parents and the students and the ownership, they really got excited about that. So I'm hoping that next year's attend, or next quarter's attendance is even better, because just that recognition that they received was, was so positive, so as far as positive reinforcement for attending school and doing your homework. Formal observations, every, I told my staff, I said, "Every teacher will get a formal observation from me this year, whether you're up for one or not." So I'm a new principal, and I want to see what's happening in the classroom, so I'll be, so right now, I'm doing that, formal observations for every teacher. And then, of course, informal observations, I'm always in the classroom, and daily walkthroughs, what's happening, and especially in the upper grades' classrooms, and keeping that accountable, so we all know what gets monitored is what gets taught. And the barriers to our progress in these focused areas, the split campus, I, you know, I feel torn. When I'm on one campus, I feel like I'm neglecting another campus. You know, it is, it is very difficult. I know at times, probably, the staff feels it, keeping the communication and keeping the enthusiasm and keeping the positive and not dwelling on the negative, because it can be so easy to say, to dwell on the negative, that what's in control of our hand, focusing what is in control of our hands, and let's take control of that, and let's move on forward, move forward. So that, that's been difficult. Our SMART goals, our first SMART goal is to increase the percentage of EL students scoring proficient or better in English language arts from 16 percent to meet that goal at 35.2 percent by June 2007. Teacher accountability, again, what gets monitored is what gets taught, and so I'm requiring every teacher to turn in their weekly ELD lessons to me. So I review their weekly ELD lessons, and I put comments on them, and then I copy them, and of course, they get them back. So, and I have to say, thank you to the district in supporting us with the TOESS teachers, because they have made this a lot easier, I know for me as a principal, to, to monitor this and keep this information in place, because I've, also, before I did this, I had the TOESS teachers meet with our staff, give a brief overview of what it is, the systematic ELD, just to review again, the expectations that need, that need to be met. Then I required each teacher to meet with the TOESS teachers, and the TOESS teachers were great, they would even go to that site or go to the teachers, they didn't necessarily have to go, our teachers didn't necessarily have to go to the TOESS teachers, so they were very supportive in, in making that happen. And then, and then we moved on to those weekly ELD lessons, and, and making that accountable. So, so I'm, I'm, now that I'm seeing the lessons and seeing what's happening, it's very exciting, because when I go in the classroom, I'm seeing exactly what I'm seeing, that's the lesson that they're turning in to me. Then I also meet with grade-level teams monthly to see how their students are progressing, to review student assessments and data analysis, to see if, how, how they are doing, and then again, formal evaluations for everyone. This year, we also hired a cell coordinator and to coordinate the testing and to make sure that all of our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted, and we share that with Roosevelt in Cleveland, and that's been really great to have her as a support mechanism person, too. And then integrating technology, and I'll talk about that a little bit, but that's been a huge focus this year for me as administrator, too, is upgrading our technology and getting, getting up to par, I guess. I mean, I feel like we're so far behind in the technology realm. And last year, our plan supported MacBooks for each teacher and LCD projectors and digital cameras. So in August, we had a professional development, and in August, it was strictly all technology, and how to use the technology, and how to, how to incorporate it into the lessons. And I was, I'm so excited, I just, each month, I see the teachers branch more and try more and get creative. And one teacher just received a Village Properties grant to purchase an Elmo, and, and she did a great lesson, and she was, I was telling Robin the other day that she was presenting the open court vocabulary, the word abandoned, and she had an abandoned house and abandoned car, she, the pictures that she pulled up, so it's great for your EL, EL learners, too, so they're seeing the pictures. She had the parts of speech on there, she had the, the different tenses, how to use the word and the different tenses, but she did this for each vocabulary word. And then now she can use that, she can save that as a resource. So I'm really impressed with how we're, how we're coming along in the technology realm. And then this year's plan provides new computers for our computer lab that will hopefully get soon. So, so we're coming along, and we're getting, I'm encouraged of what's happening with technology. Our next goal is to increase percentage of students scoring proficient or higher in English language arts from 40.9 percent to 45 percent by June. And again, I believe it's just the small group differential instruction, what are you doing to differentiate your, your instruction in the classroom? I want to, I don't want to see a lot of direct instruction, I want to see hands-on instruction happening in the classroom. I, I don't want my students falling, I want them engaged, and we talk about that a lot as, as, and principals, what are we doing to increase student engagement? And when we doing our, when we're, when I'm doing my walkthroughs for the classroom, I'm looking for that, and I tell I'm looking for that and I tell my, I'm telling my staff, I wanna see my students highly engaged in the lesson. Uh, and then we, our plan supports a teacher's assistant, one at each grade level and then at kindergarten, of course the kindergarten teachers have their own teacher's assistant, how that teacher's assistant is to be used is to help support in that differentiation instruction and to help support our English Language learners, and I feel very fortunate where most of our teacher's assistants have credentials, which is very rare, and so especially in the combination class, I have a kindergarten, first grade combination class, and I think that's through, due through my real relationship with Westmont, cause they're Westmont credentialed students, and, um, the kindergarten through first grade assistant, she's able to then pull out students and actually teach a lesson, and then also the fifth and sixth grade, which is, it's really hard to have a five, six combination class, as you know, because they're all at different levels and fifth grade, just one fifth grade class can be all, all different levels, but when you have two different grades and they're all, I mean, it's just can get overwhelming, and, um, and it's been very successful and, 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 and able to, to meet the different needs and then they're collaborating, working together, and the, the fifth grade, fifth, sixth teacher's assistant, she's also part of the science, um, committee that, that's, that she's working with the science teachers with that too, and she's doing bits at the same time, so there she's really, they're really excited about working together with the teacher and it's a great opportunity for them as, to kind of get into the school system too. Um, and then our third goal and our last goal is to increase the percentage of students scoring proficient or higher in math from forty-five point three percent to fifty-five percent by June two thousand and six, and again it's, I wanna see Saxon math incorporated with hardcore, and, um, also we've, we started at the end of the year, in February, using accelerated math, but accelerated math is only used to help when students have finished their work, to help with differentiating the instruction with mainly your higher students, but I don't want it at all taking the place of Saxon math or hardcore band of math, and I made that perfectly clear and, and I, I do see that happening. Um, and then specific activities that I'm doing to support and monitor SMART goals, um, student conferences, I think it's really important to tell, to meet with a student, if I'm looking at, as I'm going through their star scores and I'm seeing that one student isn't meeting what I feel their capability in knowing the students, then I've, I've met with them and I said, "You can do better than this, I know you," and they said, "Well, yeah, well, you know, I didn't, I got tired and I just started filling in some bubbles." Well, you can't do, you know, and, and you get to know why maybe they didn't score as well as they did, and, um, and it's not okay to tell a student they're doing well when they're not, you know, that gives them a false, false conception that, "Oh, I, I am, doing well," but later in life they'll find out, "Well, really, I'm not that great at math," just because they told me I was. Um, and then creating a positive challenging atmosphere for all students, everything needs to be, I want, I want school to be fun, like I said, I want it to be fun, I want it to be engaging and I want it to be positive, and if students feel that the effective filter is, is low in the classroom, that they feel that they can answer any, ask any question, then that learning cur- or just goes dramatically up. Um, and then also I'm cracking down on, on discipline, you know, I, I've told Robin, she's probably gonna get overwhelmed with my suspensions, but you know what, I'm, I have zero tolerance, and, um, and, and my students know that and, and I cracked on hard, um, the first two months and I'm seeing this month, "Oh, we get it." And so I'm seeing, um, that change around too, which is great. Uh, of course, parent and student surveys, um, and then also meeting with my instructional assistants, I think a lot of times you meet with your, your teachers as principals, but are you meeting with your instructional assistants, do they know exactly what they're supposed to be doing, um, to help support what's going on in the classroom, so doing that. Um, and then our professional development plan, as you know, we're going to Co- Colorado Springs next week, which is great, and, um, every teacher's going except for two, and, um, we're excited about that and I feel it's, it's so important, especially with a split campus, for morale and to get, to big, to, for us all to get together and say, "This is our focus, it's student achievement and raising our student scores and what are we gonna do together to do it and, and how are we gonna make this happen?" And, and I know, I feel every year when we go to the conference, that everyone just gets kind of revamped again and excited about teaching and, and, and what's happening in the classroom. Integrating technology in the classroom, again, and we're spending time on technology, we did a professional development in August, we'll do another one in February, how we're gonna integrate technology, um, we have the Ranzilli program to help differentiate the instruction with our Gate students, and student portal, our, our staff was trained on the student portal and we're getting the, getting our students involved with this student portal, um, and thank you to the Orphola Foundation for supporting that, and then, and then also something that we've added this year is a, a book club for teachers, so we're reading actually The Knowledge Deficit right now and then at our staff meeting, taking fifteen minutes to discuss each chapter, and then, um, they, last year, at last year's Core Knowledge Conference, there's a book, There Are No Shortcuts by Rafe Esquik, and he was a nominee, he was the National Teacher of the Year last year, and he was the guest, he was the speaker at the Core Knowledge Conference last year, and so I, our teachers were just very excited, and he's also a teacher in Los Angeles, and we had several teachers actually observe his classroom last year, which was really exciting, and his teaching practices, and he's got great things in this book, um, and basically says, "If you don't like teaching, then get out of the profession," you know, which is, which is great. Uh, my leadership, um, I'm very collaborative and very direct approach, um, in my leadership actions and, and being visible at all times, um, supporting the systematic ELD with our professional development, as you know, um, and then bringing experts in from within the district to, to, to support, to give us their knowledge. Um, our professional learning communities, I feel like the Academy's ahead of the game in that area and the fact that, when the Academy was established, that was established with the Academy, with, with having release time as far as PE time, and then also built-in a, a Thursday early release day, so our teachers actually have three, three days a week to meet and to collaborate with one another, and that gives them ample amount of time to, um, to meet. And then, um, I just wanna end off with, uh, my, I, I, my leadership comes from a lot from John Wooden, I don't know if you, obviously, I hope you know who John Wooden is, um, and his Pyramid of Success and, um, and I, I, I tried to model, he talks about his Pyramid of Success, when he started it in nineteen thirty-seven, that, uh, the two corner, corner, um, pillars were industriousness and enthusiasm, and industriousness, you know, hard work, putting in a hundred and ten percent, you can't do anything without hard work, and then enthusiasm, you need to be excited about what you're doing, and they come together, but if you don't have those, then you're not gonna have success. And so I try to model that with, um, with everything that I'm doing, with my hard work and trying to be positive and enthusiastic about what we're doing, and then my goal as a leader is to instill these qualities within my staff and, and by my example, so. I think I went over.
Do we wanna start with Ms. Cordero and just move up the table?
Um, I'm not sure I really had any...
It's okay not to.
Yeah, I'm not sure I really had any major questions.
I'll take her time.
A couple of the ones I had, I think you answered in your, in your presentation, so I'll, I'll let Mike call you.
Is this on? Okay. Um, one of the things I really liked hearing was what you're doing for high achieving students, um, and I liked hearing about the Ranzilli and, um, and I'm curious to hear a little bit more about that, how that's actually, you know, how much time are you being, or is being spent on it? Another question I had that may go to Robin is that I didn't see Gate money listed on any of these plans, and I don't know if it's just because it's not part of categorical, um, funding.
It is part, and that was one of those, when I said challenges, it hasn't been distributed yet, or it, it was just done, not in time to put in the plans, there is Gate funding.
Um, so, so guess what, the budgets have all changed already. Okay, I was wondering about that, because obviously I was expecting some money from the, for the Ranzilli, perhaps to be paid for with Gate money, so, okay, that's good to hear. The Community Academy has been split for most of its existence, unfortunately, and I'm glad that that's coming to an end soon. It was two full years at La Cumbra?
We're working on our third year, yes.
This is the third year with the third grade over there, but two full years for four through six over there. The first year that it was at La Cumbra, there was a big jump, especially in math. In the second year, there's a big drop. Um, and you talked about the professional development for, uh, English Language Arts, for, uh, English Language learners and the teachers on special assignment and that, what are you doing for math, for professional, I mean, I know you wanna get Saxon back in, and I'm not sure if you got new teachers in and that's part of the issue, but how are you training them to incorporate Saxon and hardcore together for best effect?
I feel that our math program is very strong, Saxon math, and, um, that's part of the problem too, we had two new teachers last year, and one was a sixth grader and one was a fifth grade teacher, they're not new teachers, but new to the Academy, they were tenured teachers.
And probably therefore new to Saxon math.
Um, actually, one, um, had used Saxon math before, but just chose not to use it. Um, so that's be, you know, having two new teachers and having no support, um, you know, it, it's what...
But do you have a math, a specific math plan for them to get some training?
Well, what we're using is, we're, they're using the hard, I, I, one thing that I, well, there's a few, I like hardcore math and then the fact that it gives teachers and students ample time to, um, master a concept versus what Saxon math is constantly reviewing, but you might learn fractions one day and the next day you learn decimals and, so I don't feel like Sa- Saxon math gives students enough time to actually master one specific concept, but the two together meld very well, so when you're, so master a concept, then use Saxon to review, and the great thing about Saxon too, it catches, it helps the teacher catch what necessarily the student isn't getting, for example, if they're not telling, if they don't get telling time, but they maybe learned time three months ago, Saxon will catch that for them, versus hardcore is going on to one new subject. Um, does that answer? Um, but as far as, um, you know, the, the professional development, I, 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 I strongly feel that, and looking at especially our scores, for example, um, the, the, the other grades did very well, and, um, and I just, I want them to continue to go in that direction, obviously, I think we're doing well, and just be, you don't necessarily need to change something just to change it for change's sake, um, and I feel that right now, we need to really focus on our English Language learners, um, and of course, our upper grade teachers need to change their style, but I, I'm monitoring what's going on to make sure that it's happening, and I think that's the key difference of what was happening last year compared to what's happening this year.
Gotcha. Um, another, I, I was actually hearing something a little bit different than Dr. Noel when he was talking about the reclassifying, uh, of English proficient, and it sounded to me like it used to be that the Academy would reclassify as quickly as possible, but the new plan is to, um, not, I hope, play any sort of game, but to be more, um, judicious, do you wanna just talk a little bit more about that, making sure that they're being correctly reclassified rather than just rushing through the process?
Well, I think before the Academy was just, um, you need a FEP students, if they're, if they're a LEP, that's a bad thing, and that's not the case, and we all know that that's not the case, so as initials, as K initials, when the test isn't, there's no written part of the test and it's just all oral, um, so it's not a, it's not a true test of whether or not they're proficient or not, and what was happening is they were just going strictly on the oral in kindergarten saying, classifying them as FEPS, when really they probably, they were LEPs, just because they can, they're, they do well orally, you know, and, and so, and then the district has taken that stance too on that and saying, "Look, we, we need him, we're, we're not, we need, they need to be LEPs because of that fact, in second grade there is that component, that written component," so.
Okay, good. Um, and, uh, again, this is my, that might be for Robin, um, on page twenty-seven, when she's talking here, and you may be able to address this, Amy.
Okay.
The K through third grade music teacher, where it's the Music PE Block Grant?
Yes.
Is that o- I, I, for the Music PE Block Grant, I understood there, there was one that was one-time money that was not supposed to be used for teachers, and then there's one that is ongoing with us being held at the district, correct? No?
I put some non-categorical money in here, as you can see too, because I, cause our Site Council wanted to know where were we getting money from PTA, so I hope that doesn't confuse you as to what's categorical and what's not, and the plan, I didn't know how to make it show up as non-categorical funds, but, um, it's also a way for us to document where we're spending our other money at too.
Right, and I actually really appreciate having sources that didn't necessarily need to be in there, I think it's really enlightening.
It's helpful to, yeah, I agree.
But, but I don't know, do you, can you answer that, Robin?
I can answer it in that the PE Block Grant is the one-time, and it suggested not to be used for salaries for obvious reasons. I, my understanding, I'd have to double check, but you could prob- this is a small amount, probably just to augment something this year, with the thought that in the following year it's coming from other sources.
Okay, great. Um, and I think that's it for me.
Dr. Noel?
Yeah. Uh, I like, I like what I hear in your, the way you're coping. Uh, I, I look at the math and, uh, yes, you jumped in spite of the fact that you moved, but I just, I look at the, uh, at what your challenge is for next year, and it seems to me that you've met it, except for English learners, and that must be a comfortable feeling, because next year's a big leap. Uh, not so comfortable in, uh, for English learners in ELA, but same thing for English learners, that's, that's terrific, so you can really focus, you know, but not to the exclusion of, you know. Uh, I don't, I, I don't have anything except, there's one thing where I, I look and I feel terrible, because I, I probably supported it more than just passively, when I see you're spending twenty-five thousand dollars in SIF funds for bussing, uh, it just hurts, uh, when I think of other things, the way you're, you don't have a lot of money here to work with, and, uh, that twenty-five thousand would be awfully nice if you could, could have used it for instructional for PE. I don't, you know, and none of these, uh, do I see demographics, and I, I guess a decision was made that we, there wouldn't be a, a page with the demographic, school demographics on it? Am I just, did I just miss something or?
It's described at the be- in the profile.
Looking at a data page.
Yeah, I know, like a key of something, broken out.
So, something similar to what we started out with orally, to put up front, as, and that would be something that Davis could add to the board focus goals for each school.
That's why I brought my computer, I've got the demographics, so I can reference them, but, uh...
Okay.
The same for each.
That makes sense.
Yeah, just a table, you know, everybody at the same table, as Mrs. Harder does.
Okay, yeah, that was, that's an easy one, Davis has taken notes, thank you.
Uh, I like the similar school score from last year, I'm anxious to see what it is this year, I'm, I'm, I'd like to monitor that. Uh, when did, uh, do you have too few English learners to count in the API? You have less than fifteen percent?
No, no, we have thirty-six percent.
Well, see, I couldn't find a, and, pardon me, not Latinos, I mean ELs, I couldn't find an EL API score for you in the state database, and, uh, and I don't know what...
I don't know.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm just, I was curious, I, you're not, I have a list of everybody and I don't, you're not on it.
That's a good question.
Well, in, in some cases, uh, you know, like Roosevelt's here, but Roosevelt has the, the typically asterisk, you know, meaning that you're looking, yes, they've only got fourteen percent in English learners, understandable, but you have more than fourteen, more than fifteen percent.
Right.
It's pretty all in.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, you mentioned lots of changes to your EL program and lots of professional development, could you give us one example of something that's going on different in your, in, in classes right now?
Well, I, one huge example is that it's happening. Um, and it, it's, it's going on, you know, it...
So there's a, a period of time that's being spent?
A period of time is being spent every single day, uh-huh, with teaching our English Language learners, yeah, right, and I, more than anything, again, it's just what gets monitored, what is what gets taught, and I know teachers cringe, but this is what we have to do in order to raise our, to the scores, so.
Actually, I just have a couple of questions for you, Ms. Elzina, and some more general questions for Robin that I'd like to get out of the way, you know, right off the bat. And my question would be, you list... And my question would be, you listed split campus as one of your obstacles. You listed three obstacles and split campus was one. That's temporary. If you took that one off the deck, would you list another obstacle?
No.
Okay, so one doesn't immediately come to mind.
I'd say except for what Robin said, getting our numbers on time, getting 24-hour response from the district. I mean, these are things that we're working on, I know, as a district whole, but that's hard, you know, when you lose an instructional assistant, you've done an interview, and they don't get a call back till a week later. That happens.
Yeah, okay. And actually, that's, those are some of my questions for Robin. I first noticed it when I was looking at CELT administration. And schools do different things. Some use teachers, some use aides. It's not clear to me what kind of training there is for aides or instructional assistants administering the CELT. And I don't, there's nothing uniform that happens at the schools over CELT administration. And I don't know if that impacts outcomes.
There is uniform training. And Carrie Martin under Davis does the training. So there, there is that. That's very uniform. But as far as who does it and how they choose to do it, like Amy mentioned this year, she and Mike Vale and Donna Ronzoni have hired somebody to do that together.
Okay.
And each school, depending on the number of English learners as well, that's another issue, you know.
Right. And it raises the larger question of spending categorical funding for aides versus teachers. You know, I realize there's an expense involved, but there's also an expertise involved. And I mean, I can't tell a principal what to do. I don't know what to do. But it would be really nice to try and, and see if there's a connection between using Title I teachers and outcomes versus instructional aides and outcomes.
You're, you're not talking just about CELT testing. You're talking about in general, yes.
No, 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 I said in general, overall. And I realize why a principal would make the decision to use aides versus teachers. It's an expense. You know, it's a financial issue.
Yes.
But I don't know if the outcomes would be different using teachers versus instructional aides.
You know, there, there's something to be said for that. And then, on the other hand, there are teachers, and then there are teachers, and then there are aides, and there are aides. It's just the quality that goes on in the training, and you get it, yeah.
Right, okay. Apart from training for CELT administration, do instructional aides receive any kind of training from the district?
Not that I'm aware of in general. Schools involve their aides many times, the instructional assistants, in a lot of the training, and that's to varying degrees. To my knowledge, there is not in, in our personnel department. I don't believe there's, I mean, there's certain kinds of basic training, but not anything that's really linked to the curriculum.
Is there some, is there something we should be looking at?
That's absolutely, yeah.
Okay, okay. I, you know, I think that's it for, for right now.
Would, would you like, oh, I'm sorry.
Just one other question. There have to be strategies involved, only I'll ask both of you. Strategies involved, we're going to be dealing with more and more combination classes as enrollments go down. I mean, that's just a fact of life. What kinds of strategies are used in putting together combination classes? I mean, I know the challenge of, students have many different ability levels, and yet there has to be some strategy put into who goes into that classroom so that you don't have such a huge span of ability levels.
Well, and also behavior.
Right.
I mean, you can't have all the behavior children in the combination class because they need to be able to work somewhat independently.
Right.
That, so that plays a huge factor, along with how they do academically. And also, depends on how many teachers you have at that grade level. If you have quite a few teachers, you can help and, and differentiate the structure, or maybe you departmentalize a little bit, where one teacher teaches a high, medium, low class. So it kind of all depends upon the, the number of teachers you have to work with. I know in our five-six combination class, she just has one sixth grade teacher and one fifth grade teacher, and then she's got the five-six, so that's really difficult. You don't have a lot of teachers to really work with and help departmentalize. But where she does have is, she does have a credential teacher or aide to support in that. So it is, it's getting creative and using your resources and kind of figuring out how that best fits together and how that teacher, what best works for that teacher, too. Because what works maybe for one teacher, the other teacher says, no, I don't want to do that.
Well, and the strategies in putting together a combination would vary from school to school, depending on personnel and...
And the number of kids. Sometimes you have a combination with five, you know, first, it's just, it's, it's a numbers game as well, as far as what strategy you're going to use. Sometimes a group of kids can go to another teacher for part of the day or for that curriculum at time.
Okay, okay.
Could we give Davis Hayden an opportunity to, to comment on missing data in the state data, database?
Sure.
Great.
I did notice some of the data was missing for some schools in some areas. And there's going to be data corrections that are going in. And for some of the schools, the data corrections will cover it. But for other schools, I decided to not do anything about it and wait because, in most cases, it would have probably not been beneficial to the school to have pointed it out at that time. So we're going to see what happens when the state comes up with their latest round of data corrections and see where they're at. If they're still missing, then yeah, I'll give a call to CDE and say, what's going on here? Why aren't their scores here?
Could, could be my error, but I...
No, it's not your error. There were missing places on some of the schools. I picked that up earlier.
I actually did have one more very particular question, and I don't know if Michael might want to weigh in. You spent $2,000 out of your, out of your SIP money to put together a promotional video. And I guess my question is, is that an appropriate use of SIP funding? It probably is, but...
Please, please you recall that SIP is actually now of a block grant, and yes, that kind of expenditure is allowed. And if you'll permit me, two very quick comments. Regarding a reclassification, I would ask you not to further dwell into that issue today in that in August, the Department of Education visited the RCD E and is issuing a finding that should come out later in November that may change the guidelines for reclassification. The second thing in regards to Title I and teacher aides. A study was conducted by the Department of Education several years ago at that time, and the belief still holds that they did not find effectiveness in hiring aides out of Title I.
That's taking me a minute. They did not find...
That was for instructional purposes. There was a time when most of the Title I money across the state was spent on instructional aides.
On aides, right.
Yes. And at this point, we're bringing in credential teachers to do the additional instruction.
They found that, that, when the, it was the effectiveness part. By some measures of effectiveness, aides were ineffective.
Correct.
Yes. Well, there's...
Must be appropriateness of Mrs. Harder's question.
There's nothing like a credential teacher to teach.
It probably, it probably had to do with what the aides were being asked to do as well, if I remember.
Training.
The training, exactly. And I've written that down, training, yes, right. But you'll notice in our schools, all of them, they have a lot of credentialed teachers, Title I teachers, reading teachers. They're called different things, but there's, you know, teachers with their credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your peers, your peers appreciate that you went first.
At UCLA Parents Day, some of the parents asked, well, what about TAs rather than credentialed professors, right? And the answer was, the TAs are the only ones who have real training in teaching.
So we are on to Cesar Chavez Charter School.
Thank you.
Let me just, let me just comment before we begin. You know, there are a lot of things that go on in life at the school, and a lot of activities, and altogether, they, they all form the school culture. We're going to ask our presenters to, to try to stick to those things that are most related directly to the SMART goals, so you get a, a strong indication of what's being done at the school to make those kinds of changes. I know you will hear some comments about other activities at the school, but that's the bulk of our, of our presentation today. Did you want to?
Oh, no, that's...
Well, and since we have even I are here from Cesar Chavez, I'd like to also remind you that Cesar Chavez doesn't need to come in front of this board and do a presentation. Even I are wants to be here to do that, so we welcome her.
Thank you. I am indeed happy to be here and have a chance. I know, we're all busy, so busy, so it's nice to have the chance to communicate about what's happening at, at our respective schools. This year, we have 243 students enrolled, so enrollment has gone up again. The percentage of English learners is at 67%, and that's comparable to what it was last year, with 60-something last year. We have 11 classroom teachers now. We continue to bring in two full K classrooms each year. And in addition to those 11 classroom teachers, we have credential teachers for music, art, PE, and a Title I credential teacher. Our school-wide focus area, our main area, continues to be language arts, between the dual immersion program, teaching Spanish and English language arts, but also with our high English learner population. Obviously, we need to continue to work on them becoming fluent in English. Our STAR ELA scores did show notable improvement, along with our, our CELT scores for the English learners, but we still have many students who are not yet proficient. We don't have 100% proficiency, so that is our main focus area still, the language arts. We also have as a focus area to continue to work together as a professional learning community and do, we're doing some new things this year. We do have additional release time for teachers. In the past, our school has always had an early release Thursday to allow time for staff development and teacher principal meetings. We now have with the music and PE release time, more time for teachers to actually work together during the day and to work with me, looking at student work samples, student assessments, even actual lessons before it's the end of the day, a meeting after school. It's more productive to have that release time during the day. And it's, I just, it's good for teachers to be treated, treated that way as professionals. It's part of their job to analyze that student work, so let's do it during the day before we're all tired, that kind of thing. Our data analysis, my overview would be that, again, our math scores are relatively strong. We meet the proficiency requirements. And that's, that's usually a given in a bilingual school because math is not as language dependent, so that's easily explained. We have as a continued focus, we want to keep seeing growth in the English learner subgroup. So we did meet our AYP and our API targets, our goals. We had enough growth, so it's considered safe harbor, as Davis explained to me back in August. We have not a significant subgroup of the white population. We're still a majority of Latino students. But if you do look, we have that same achievement gap between the ethnicity, so we need to close that gap, just like all other schools. So that, that's something I notice when, when looking at our data. I talked already about our enrollment being strong, that we've grown. One of our highlights is we do have, we actually have waiting lists at all grade levels for our 40 kindergarten slots next fall. We already have 37 people interested. And that's before announcing anything in January. We continue to be a school where it's a, it's a collaborative effort between not just our teachers and support staff and principal, but definitely with our parents. Part of, that's part of being a charter school, expecting, asking for, reaching out to have the, the parent involvement happening at our school. And our highlights, I, gosh, I took some notes, but I think to stay on target, I should move on to goals and not say all these other things. So, okay, so our SMART goals that are in our school plan, in a nutshell, we're looking for students to be performing at the, the grade level expectations, reading, writing, and math. Our teachers have written the goals using benchmark assessments as the way to measure it, not to just look at our end-of-the-year STAR test scores, but to be looking at this throughout the year. So part of our MOU, our charter agreement with, with the district, includes our assessment plan. For example, grades one through six administer three times a year a one-on-one reading assessment with students. It gauges their, their, a grade level correlation, looks at accuracy, fluency, comprehension. Our kindergarten teachers administer Oral J, a district assessment. And we also have onsite, we have a fall and spring writing assessment where it's rubric scored. So we are looking at that with, I guess, I just want to say, internal assessments or benchmark assessments, not just the annual evaluation. We have, again, same SMART goal as last year. We expect, we are working to have all of our English learners increase one level on the CELT. So we met that goal, and, but it's, you know, it's still a goal. We still have lots of English learners. And our third goal school-wide has to do with developing in our students a sense of social justice. This is part of, our, our school is named after Cesar Estrada Chavez, and our school rules incorporate the core values of Cesar Chavez: nonviolence, commitment to help the needy, to work together as, as members of society, as, as members of this community. Basically, we're here to help each other, not hurt each other. And so, some of the new things we're doing to work on that this year are, starting tomorrow, the, the sixth graders and I are going to be trained officially in mediation. We have a couple sessions set up through City at Peace. And from there, the students who really take to it, we plan to have them be leaders on the playground in mediation. We're going to work with other sixth graders who have interests on other fronts to be leaders, whether it's projects in the community or projects onsite with, with other students. So that's something, something new this year in the plan. We, excuse me. Talking a lot. Okay, so that basically covers, those, those are our goals, and I'll see what questions you have after that. But I wanted, did want to address professional development plan. Of our 11 teachers, two of our teachers are in their first year of full-time classroom assignments. They're participating in BITSA, the, the state program for beginning teacher support and assessment. And we have two teachers who are second-year BITSA. So the professional development, the mentoring, is, is very crucial with having a lot of younger, or non-veteran teachers. Something new I'm doing this year is I'm meeting with the year one and year two teachers myself, once a week or every other week, depending, depending on the calendar. But taking time to share what, in the past, is something I would share with teachers one-on-one after an evaluation, or if something would come up, then I would address it and do mentoring myself. As a principal, what I've realized is, wait, I needed a format to do that with the new teachers. It's good for them to have me there to ask questions that maybe they don't want to ask in a larger staff meeting, and it's a time for me to share with them. For example, we've been talking about classroom management, and now we're talking about parent communication. So it's basically, it's the tricks of the trade that I've learned over the years from other educators in 20 years, and it's like, the good things I learned when I was a new teacher, the things that I still use that are valuable in, in teaching. So I'm holding those meetings with the new teachers as part of professional development. As part of our professional learning community, our teachers are also reading and sharing professional literature, and we talked about it. Instead of having everybody read the same book, teachers went with their interests. So a, a small group of teachers are reading this book, and another group reading the other. We also agreed that we would share our in-house expertise because we don't just have all brand-new teachers. We do have veteran teachers also, or we have teachers who maybe be early on in their career, but do have extra training, that have, you know, a, a master's degree in something else or have taken extra certification in areas. So we're, we're going to make an attempt to, well, we will definitely not just attempt, but we're going to nominate each other, nominate peers, the teachers are going to nominate each other to, to share their expertise. We are participating in district professional development for Avid, our fourth, fifth, and sixth grade teachers, and I attended last year with the sixth grade teachers. We have, also, we're connected with the Teachers on Special Assignment for ELD to, to support our teachers. We also have our grades four through six teachers participating in professional development sessions with South Coast Writing Project through UCSB. There is a series of workshops preparing students, actually, teachers grades four through seven. We're invited to these sessions to prepare for the state writing assessment. And there, there'll be some other professional development sessions in addition to those on the writing assessment. So for myself, as the leader, what are some, some bullets or some things that I am doing to do all of those things that promote school success, that help everyone have that, meet those goals, meet those SMART goals, I guess, is what I want to say. This year, my second year, I am maintaining a schedule that prioritizes my time in the classroom. So out of the five days of the week, I have one day that's my office day, where I do stay in the office, and people can actually find me there. I have one day that's my appointment day, and then the other three days, I'm out, I'm in the classroom, so I'm on the playground, I'm with, with the teachers. And rather than just being there and sharing things one-on-one, I'm looking at new ways, again, with the sense of the professional learning community... again, with the sense of the professional learning community sharing, and I've realized instead of just emailing my teachers about business items and remember to do this or this assembly, I've started using the email just to share things I'm noticing in the classroom, sharing things that are part of the, the conversation about instruction and what makes good teaching, that kind of thing. I, you, I think I already did talk about this, that we have the additional release time with the PE teachers and music teachers, so what I've done is calendar with teachers during the PE release times every other week, is the time where I sit down with the grade level, and that's where we look at student work, what's the latest math assessment look like, or let's look at journals for today, and keep the conversation on student work, student learning, not just what are we doing as the adults in the school, that kind of thing. So, we're doing that with release time. Of course, I continue to monitor and share the results, school-wide, with our school governance council, with our parent groups, and with teachers as a whole. The results when we do our benchmark assessments that I mentioned earlier, the reading assessments, the writing assessments, et cetera. I continue to support, as a leader, our parent involvement component. This year, our Title I teacher, who is part-time, has an additional responsibility, being a parent coordinator, to bring those parents in who are maybe new parents, or who haven't found the way to be involved in, in our school. We have, again, our ELAC, our English Learners Advisory Committee, functions jointly with our parent ed program through UCSB's Office of Academic Preparation and Outreach, they've changed the name of the office, I think I got it right, but the program is known as Padres Adelante. So, this is a series of sixteen sessions throughout the year, which is designed for parents who were not educated in the United States, who may not know how the system works. So, it's about their role, their responsibility, differences between education system in the United States versus their, their home countries. It includes a field trip to the school board, so you'll, you'll see our parents in a few weeks, and the, we had twenty-five parents at our last meeting, so I'm going there this evening and hoping to see those twenty-five return, because we've, we've had two sessions so far this year. Our teachers are also joining the, the parent ed meetings, the teachers are rotating through this year, because the, the parents had asked for that. They don't just want to see the principal or see each other, they want the chance to talk to, to teachers in the evening. So, I also, as a leader, I've been taking my, my cue from Robin, and I try to remind myself about the concept of servant leadership. For me, as a leader, to be able to step back, to serve, to coach, to do what I need to do to support other people to do their job really well, for them to be there for the kids. And I can sum it all up by saying that our, our school motto of si se puede is something that our teachers, our dedicated teachers, our support staff have taken to heart, if it, if it means long hours, if it means extra time after school with students, if it means a phone call at seven at night, whatever it takes, time-wise, training-wise, extra patience, extra training, just everything, the teachers are on board, the parents are on board, and we have that environment where the, the students believe it. They know that it is possible to learn a two languages. It's possible to get better in reading, it's possible to get better in math, there are people all around them who believe in them. So, I would welcome your questions.
Shall we start opposites? Ms. Malikoff?
I want to ask about Avid and how that gets incorporated into your program.
Okay, so, being a bilingual school, what our teachers have decided to do is, we didn't go with the same student planner or agenda, it's a pre, prepackaged, like, even though it has pretty colors and it's a nice organizer for students, we have a teacher-created one so that it's bilingual, so it's modified for the students, for example, to keep track of their homework and the concepts covered during the day, but our, and our, but our teachers have taken on the concept of, okay, rather than Avid just being a sixth grade, I don't want to say class project thought, I, but that, to think about, okay, fourth graders do differ developmentally, what they're ready for, as far as for, for note-taking, for organizing themselves as students. So, the binder from sixth grade, the student homework planner page is a little bit different from fourth and fifth grade, so our, we have a fourth-grade teacher, a four-five teacher, and a five-six combo teacher who are working together on that. So, they have asked me to come in and do the principal binder checks, the, and the Avid liaison has scheduled site visits with the principals, and she's going to visit our school too. So, we, and we paid our fee to have all the Avid benefits this year, as far as for the online and have the support. But we've just barely begun, so.
Yeah, I'm wondering, you know, we are planning an Avid presentation for the board soon, so that it's real clear what the fourth through sixth-grade Avid program is, it's for all kids, and it's strategies in the classroom that goes across the curriculum. It's not, it's, it's a little different than in the junior highs and high schools, so you'll be getting that soon.
Dr. Knoll?
Yeah. Thanks for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Mostly, I just wanted to make sure I understand. So, I vaguely remember last year, and you were using, you have precious little categorical mind.
Right.
And you were putting your chips on one teacher. One, one FTE was taking the ball. Here it says one FTE again. That's, that's not in addition to the other one, that's.
Same person.
Same person.
Right.
Each year, because it's categorical, it's annual.
Right, yes.
And it paid off.
Yes.
I was the skeptic.
And I'm happy we're here one year later.
It would help me, and I always ask this question because I can't ever get it straight, so it's dual immersion, okay, I mean, and that's why I was looking for a demographic.
Okay.
What percent do you have native Spanish speakers, what percent do you have native English speakers? My recollection is that the native English, native Spanish speakers don't get instruction with English as the language of instruction until third grade.
Eva, I, I know you want to answer that. Let me give you some general demographics about all the schools. This was the best information we had in July of two thousand and six, and a lot of it was from Seabeds or from STAR the previous year. And this is not a direct answer to your question, but you may have other questions that this would preclude having to ask, but I'll, I'll let Eva go on to this answer.
So, the, the dual immersion is set up, and all the background is, when you set up a dual immersion program, because we want the students to learn from each other, and to, you need to have language models for both languages, you should never have less than thirty percent of English fluent, or never less than thirty percent of Spanish fluent, of either one of the, the main languages. So, our school has sixty-seven percent of our students who are English learners, but we have many students who come from a bilingual home, and when they come in, is four and a half years old. They know English as their first language, their stronger language, but they have Spanish in the home, and they know some Spanish, whether with their parents or grandparents. So, by law, we give them that CELT test, and it turns out, sometimes they're just little young entering kindergarteners, and on paper, they're English learner, that they don't come in fluent. And so, they, that group of students, they do learn to read in English first, their language arts is in English first, so the, the model with the kids we bring in, we have fifty percent of them learning to read and write in English first, fifty percent learning to read and write in Spanish first. The original design was with the expectation that third grade is the official transition year with formal reading and writing in the second language, but the practice has always been that there is second language time, whether you're adding on Spanish or adding on English, that starts in kindergarten, that's always part of their career.
The third-grade classes aren't segregated by language.
No.
So, just give me a feel for what goes on in that class, because it's, is it being taught mostly in Spanish, or the second, in second grade?
Okay, so kindergarten through second, second grade, there's always a part of the day where it is dominant language, or your first language. So, that's a block, a language, part of the language arts block. Then there's a block of the day.
In this case, Spanish being the dominant.
For some kids, Spanish, and for some kids, English.
I use the same.
Okay, yeah, so some kids, some kids are having Spanish reading while the others are having English reading, K through second. And then there's another block of the day where it's second language time, so some kids are getting their ELD, other kids are getting their Spanish as a second language time. So, that's K through two. Third grade and up is where, well, third grade gets closer to true fifty-fifty model, where the, they still have Spanish and English language arts in groups that are arranged based on how much they've transitioned, and then fourth grade and up, it, we never regroup, well, shouldn't say never, because there, there are groupings, but not based on original language dominance. And that's, that's a convoluted explanation, it's, it, you, when you see the kids in action and you see the schedule, it's easier to understand. I, and also, I just, when you asked about demographics, I wanted to share with you one of the, the changes. For example, last year, our sixth-grade graduating class of eighteen students were all Latino students, and this year, our graduating sixth-grade class, it's, it's only thirteen from those early years of the school, when, when they had a smaller enrollment, again, all Latino students. But our, the word has now spread that our school's not just for Latino families who already know Spanish, or for English learners who only know Spanish, but we're also a place for students who maybe the parents don't know Spanish, English-only families, who want their child to have that advantage, that enrichment of, of learning Spanish, and those numbers are reflected in the current kindergarten class. We have fourteen out of forty kids that are English-only, and last year, in kindergarten, it was eight, so the current first graders. So, our youngest students, the demographics are changing, where we have, we have more Anglo families and we have more English-only families, so we're getting just a slightly different population enrolling.
Now, the native English speakers?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, or those who have both?
Right.
They, how are, they are taught, are they assessed in Spanish?
Yes, they are.
And what, with what assessment is it?
It, well, I wish that it could be the California Standards Test in Spanish, but it's the APREDA. We're not allowed to give them the same test that the native Spanish speakers take, at this point. So, that, that's second grade and up, the standardized test, but we also do our own, our in-house benchmark assessments, starting in second grade.
Okay, I, I know the theory, because I remember going, when this all came up.
Right, yeah, because reading is reading.
You read the college studies, and, and the idea was, you know, it takes nine years of instruction in the, in the native language, the dominant language, to get on a par in terms of ability to, to learn the regular curriculum, something was.
Yes, but the English is hand-in-hand with that native language instruction. We don't wait to add on English. The, the idea is to not drop the home language, but to continue to develop it, that's why it's considered developmental, developmental bilingual program or an additive program. We maintain the Spanish, we develop that, and add on English from the get-go. The kindergarteners in January are learning the letters and sounds in their second language. They've got the first half of the year for first language, and they're getting exposure to the oral and written of both languages all year long, every grade level.
Just a couple, a couple of other things, uh, thank you for the demographics, that, that helps.
You're all, sorry about that.
Well, but at least I had something to look at without disturbing Mrs. Parker by turning my computer on. The, oh, I, I wanted, the only thing that, I, I mean, I, I see the challenge, because, you know, you did, you did really well, but with the bar going up next year, you, your work certainly cut out for you.
Yes.
Too bad you can't hire two of them, two FTE.
Well, we're all doing it together. You, you know, this just shows the categorical budget, but I did include the page of our, our entire charter school budget.
Well, I wanted, I had that down, and I wanted to say to the superintendent, I found that very helpful, to have, I, I, my recollection is, I rarely have been seen school budgets, and that was really instructive, to, they could then look at that and look at yours. Of course, yours is a very simple category.
Yeah, much smaller and easier.
Franklin with his real complex categorical budget.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I, the last thing on, the similar school score is certainly a matter of concern, I'm sure to you, but what do you, what's?
I, um.
Talk to me about that.
Right, well, I, I'm curious to see how much it changes now that we've gone up, but we, I, because I looked up some of the, you know, the schools that were considered similar schools, and one of the things that does happen is, as we attract families who are English-only, and so we have a different, even though we have maybe the same percentage of English learners as some, as other schools, we, we end up getting a different college education level sometimes, or the difference in ethnicities. The truth is, I'm mumbling, because I'm not sure, but I also, I recollect that Davis said that the similar schools, the way that it is, that is it, could, would we say less trustworthy, or their, their means of determining similar schools, do we actually know what that is? Because I've looked, and what's considered a similar school to my school of a hundred and twenty-five kids took the test, some of similar schools had four hundred kids take the test, didn't have sixty-seven percent English learners, maybe we're two-way immersion, maybe we're not, they didn't look similar to me when I went on the internet and read the background of them, so I, I couldn't make sense of how that's decided.
It's like a sixteen variable regression model.
Okay, right.
And they come out with a, you know, an SCI, right, a similar school, or School Characteristics Index, and, and there you are, you find your, your number on there, and you count fifty above it and fifty below it, and you got a hundred similar schools. So, it all depends on, I know Davis has always raised questions with that, it all depends on, on, on whether those sixteen variables are weighted appropriately, or they, presumably it was all done empirically. So, all I'm saying is that, I don't throw it out, I, usually when one has a low similar school score, one hears a challenge of the, of the validity of the similar school ranking.
Well, let me, let me do take two on my response. One of the similar schools listed was Pacheco Elementary School in San Luis Coastal.
I was just going to ask you, that was my next question.
Two-way immersion, I worked there for eight years, and I remember when the API there was in the six hundred, six twenty, six forty, six seventy, seven ten, I think they're up at eight hundred now. So, that's part of me knowing that we're on the right track, it is totally possible to have a two-way immersion school and to, to meet these targets. And so, I expect our similar schools rank to continue to go up, just like I expect us to continue improving.
Unless they keep going up.
So, so we can't necessarily catch them yet, but I know the two-way immersion schools can do that.
But that's what, that was my next question, I wanted to ask expressly about Pacheco. How do you feel, you know, you're doing visa v. Pacheco, that was your model, right?
Mm-hmm.
At least that was the model presented when, when the charter was presented to the board.
Right, right, yes, I.
They're doing, how well, do you just say?
I know they were very close to eight hundred, if they haven't met eight hundred yet, last I checked, I said.
School, school-wide?
School-wide, yes, yeah. And can you send our new teaching staff up to observe there? Now, Cesar Chavez, we actually have a group from Lompoc planning to visit us, because Lompoc Unified is on the verge of approving a dual immersion charter school. We won't be the only one in the county anymore, they, they just had a meeting about a week ago, and so, we're looking to mentor that teaching staff, those parents, the way Pacheco Elementary has mentored Cesar Chavez.
May I comment on the scores at the school? I don't think you spent enough time gloating on your scores this last spring, but the school did see a significant increase in their scores, and we're expecting that their, that their similar schools rank, as well as the rate, state rank, will show that.
Yeah, and I, I should say, I should acknowledge that this is a year-old API number, presumably, then, that this will improve. Well, I just really commend, commend you on the, on the step up, and what do you say, bon courage with respect to me meeting the raised bar? Oh, wrong language, I don't know how to say.
That's okay. We are multilingual, we still want to add a third language one of these years.
That's my dominant, well, my father's dominant.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'll try to be quick.
Okay.
And I do want to congratulate you on the scores, and point out that with the dual-language immersion program, STAR tests just don't really fit that kind of model, and it will always be challenging, but we all have to acknowledge that the point is to have bilingual children, and I really think it's more valid to look at where, what happens to those kids as they get older, what's happening in your upper grades, and what's happening at the junior high and high school level. I think you just had your first group of seventh graders complete, and they're now starting eighth grade, so one of the questions I had was, have you looked yet at, or has Dr. Hayden looked, at how those Cesar Chavez students did once they were hit in a total immersion, English, school? And I would, I would be very interested in getting that information if you haven't gotten it yet.
I don't have it, and I'm, I'm intrigued to see it too, yes.
Yeah, because I, I think that that could be quite valuable. One of the things that I noticed is your, your facilities issue.
Yeah.
You don't have a library, or any testing or conference rooms. Have you gone after any of the charter facilities money that sometimes becomes available?
Because we are in district facilities under Prop thirty-nine, that money has, it's not the right category of money for us, that would be for. That would be for a charter school, for example, if we were paying for facilities across the street in a different building.
Gotcha. And then I also just had one other quick question, based on your your proposed budget page, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight. I noticed that you, in your federal categorical money, the Title I, II, III, et cetera, that you adopted a budget with a ten percent reduction in Title I. Is that, in fact, what happened? Was there a ten percent reduction in Title I for oh seven, oh eight?
No, there was not a reduction in Title I. That was, all of the original budget had that, and that was provided by our former Director of Fiscal Services. Very conservative way of funding, and that's since been changed.
And we'll be doing the October revision at our charter school for this budget.
Okay, so all schools, what we what we are what we seeing in?
What you see now is not ten percent. That was changed before.
That was changed for us, but just not for this one. Okay.
Yeah, the the complete budget page was our adopt a budget in May, but the you will see a higher Title I amount in this school plan online, is higher than what's on that back page.
All right, all right, thank you.
You're welcome. Michael Gonzalez is reminding me, the final figures, of course, I think you guys know this, have not been released yet, but we know it's not going to be ten percent.
Good point.
Well, one of my questions was already answered or asked, and I think going to be answered, and that was the question about how the students do longitudinal, because when we started the school in with with just kindergarten and adding a grade every year, we knew that it was going to be a long time before we would see the results of whether or not the plan was proving successful. So I wanted to get that information. I'm glad we're going to see that. I also had a question, and this is a very general, quick sort of general question, and you may or may not know it, and maybe Robin would know this. And that is, the Padres Adelantes program is, I think, really a great program, and I've attended a number of the meetings. It's always a huge turnout. I mean, huge by what we normally consider to be parent, you know, standards. And I'm I'm always wondering if the other schools are working with them as well to bring more involvement of the Spanish-speaking parents in, because it is one of the best programs I've seen directed at Spanish-speaking parents. So I don't know if you know the answer to that, or maybe somebody else in the district knows the answer to that.
Yes, that was started, well, actually, at this point, Dos Pueblos in Galita Valley Junior High. It's kind of a feeder pattern at one point, and that's who is currently involved with Padres Adelante. I don't know that it's been brought up for the other schools. I know there's cost and and all of that, but it's something to share. I don't think that the other schools are even aware of, I mean, they know about the program, but not so much how valuable it is.
And I can put it on the to-do list because for our parents, we what we our ideal, our plan is for our parents to take on leadership of this parent ed component, not be dependent on the UCSB grad student, so that our parents can continue to educate the new parents who will come in in future years. And it could be an opportunity for them to reach out to other other elementary schools as part of, is there, because part of it is developing their leadership. It's not just about how to work with the school system, the school district, how to get financial aid for college, all these things are included. But it's also how to conduct a meeting, how to give a presentation, and how to become a leader, be an advocate for your child, be a leader in your school, and work with the system.
Well, you've anticipated where I was going with this, because that was, I was going to ask how you might articulate with other schools.
I'll talk to him about it tonight.
Great. Because one of the things that we often hear is how difficult it is to to get Latino parents and Spanish, especially Spanish-speaking parents primarily, involved in school meetings, et cetera. And a lot of schools have done a great deal of outreach and haven't had the level of success that they would like. And Cesar Chavez is usually quite successful in bringing in Spanish-speaking parents to participate in a lot of school meetings and activities. And so that was actually where I was headed with that. I was thinking it maybe there's a way where you could pass along some of the strategies that you use. Now, it's a little bit different because part of the school is that it requires some parent participation. But but I think it would just be useful because you have such a, I think, now, a fairly good basis.
Yeah, and we took a tiny step this year. We did open the meetings up to the Franklin parents are invited. So we've had some of the parents from Franklin Elementary attending also. And so our parents are already willing to reach out to other.
For the Padres Adelantes?
For Padres Adelante, yeah. It's open this year to both.
Ah, good.
Thank you. Asked and answered. I just have one request. Oh, go ahead.
I was simply going to share with you that. Is it?
I was going to share with you that Padres Adelantes has adopted, through its partnership with UCSB, it uses a parent education program that was developed by MALDEF, the Mexican-American Legal Aid Foundation. And this this parent education program has been employed, not was first pioneered, actually, over in Isla Vista School. It then followed at Galita Valley and Dos Pueblos, but it's really been taken off and well-developed over Cesar Chavez. So it is a model, and a very effective one, that we've not really had a chance yet to introduce to the rest of the schools in the district.
I was going to make a request, and that is, when your parents come to the school board meeting that they plan on coming to, if, I don't know if you plan to attend with them, or if they might have a spokesperson so that they can be acknowledged when they when they attend the meeting. I would appreciate that. Thank you. We are moving on to Cleveland. We are fully one, almost one, complete school behind. So I'd like to ask my fellow board members to discipline themselves in asking questions that are focused on the single plan. Or we may be here until tomorrow, the next day.
Okay, are you ready, Mike Vale, Espalat Cleveland?
Wait a second, are they ready for?
Are they ready for you? Michael, be quick.
Well, you know, it's always it's always a pleasure to to see you and be able to share ideas with you. We love it at Cleveland School when we have visitors. Our doors are always open, and so we say we're an elementary school, so we have very few secrets. But this is a chance, once a year, to get to tell you things that are going on at our school. I'm going to focus on student achievement almost exclusively. We have lots of programs that I'd like to share, and many of you have been able to see them. So as as you have questions about programs, I'd be more than willing to share on that. We're very proud, I am very proud to be principal of Cleveland School, to see the the continued improvement in student achievement. If we think back to nineteen ninety-eight, when we first measured English reading fluency amongst first graders, and fifteen percent of our students met district, at the time, district benchmarks for fluency. Our overall English learner, our overall English Language Arts scores, as measured by the California Standards Test, the CST, we're now up to thirty-seven percent, over thirty-seven percent are reaching proficiency or or above. In mathematics, mathematics continues to be in an area that we're very proud of, the student, the work of our teachers, and the achievement of our students, where the majority of students are reaching proficiency or above. Our English learners, fifty percent of our English learners are reaching proficiency or above in in mathematics. And I would point out that thirty-one percent of our students with with learning disabilities are meeting proficiency or above levels in in mathematics. So it is an area of pride, and it's an area that shows that we still have somewhere between around forty-five percent of our student population, we'd like to also raise their achievement as as well. But we believe that the achievement of our students is is on an upward upward curve. If we compare our achievement to similar schools, for the last three years, we've been a ten, and we have expectations that we'll again reach a ten, although Davis tells me it's hard to do that, year in, year in and year out. We still have challenges in terms of our English learners' population. We continue to be a school with approximately two-thirds of our students are English learners, but I believe that's an undercount still. We, too, have the difficulty or a problem of statistical problem of initial FEPs. And so I believe that if I look at my kindergarten classes, about ninety-eight percent of my students are are English learners as as they enter. So why do I think that our students are having this success? Props to my teachers, I would say this. I believe it's the way that we use time. I believe it's the way that we use time. And I think that there is an inner, there's a connection between the our overall school calendar, learning calendar, and the that allows students to have a continuous learning program in which there are not large gaps of time for them, which they forget as English learners, in which they are away from the second language, and that they have more continuous contact with instructional programs that we offer them. I think that's a basic component of the success of our school. I think that 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 is combined, though, with creative ways that our teachers have developed to respond to student learning needs continuously throughout the school year. That's reflected in the way that they meet and evaluate student learning on a weekly basis, and that they respond to their understanding of what learning needs exist amongst amongst all levels of of the student population. They respond as immediately as possible, and there are regular structures set up in our school to make to make that possible, so that we do not, our goal is that, as a professional learning community, if we want to use that that term, that our job is to find out what students need and then to respond as as thoughtfully and as professionally as possible. And I think our teachers are doing that. They are continually reflecting on what they do. If there is any constant in the in the Cleveland instructional program, it's that teachers are continually thinking about what do they need to do about changing their professional behavior, okay, to meet the needs of students. And with that attitude, and with the ability to work with students continuously throughout the year, our students ought to do better. They ought to do better. If we look at the API for Latino students, both in our city and across the state, the API is up on average six hundred and sixty, right in the area of six hundred and sixty. The API for Latino students in Cleveland School, seven hundred and forty-six this past year. So there is somewhere in the area of an eighty-point difference in the in the achievement of of these students. It's something that our teachers should be lauded for, and it's, but it's not an obituary. It's it's that's the health record right now, and we need, there's more that that needs to be done at our school. We have initiatives this year that respond, continue to respond to the data, achievement data, as we analyze it and evaluate it. We have, we've talked about instructional aids. We have now at Cleveland School only three instructional aids, and in any other, if they had the credentials, they'd be considered outstanding teachers. These are outstanding educators, paraprofessionals, okay? The bulk of our expenditures in terms of student support are are dedicated or are expended on credentialed, highly qualified teachers. We have teachers working with students in both third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade that are credentialed, fully credentialed teachers. We have specialized reading support programs that that utilize the skills of credentialed teachers, referring to Waterford, our Waterford programs. And so our our bulk of our efforts is is focused on the regular instructional day, not at night, not before dawn, but right throughout the day, and we use credentialed teachers to to meet the needs of students. But all those teachers are organized in in ways that allow them to continually monitor student progress and respond to that progress. We allow teachers and we encourage teachers to utilize their professional passion to be involved in professional development activities. And while we participate in some very effective district-sponsored programs, professional development programs, for example, our English Language Development Program, utilizing teachers on special assignment, is a fabulous support to our teachers that we regularly are involved in. Our participation in science professional development in in the area of science, the consortium that we have with Carpenter Unified School District, is a terrific initiative on the part of of our school district. But we have other professional development that occurs regularly at at our school, and it is it is selected by teachers, organized by teachers, and focused on teaching teaching needs. And we think that that's an effective model to increase the the professional skills of our of our teachers. We have programs to, we think that teachers, that our parents can also play a vital role in that. Our C-BET program is highly successful in terms of the numbers of people that are involved. It's a five-day-a-week program, three hours a day. On average, around thirty teachers or parents participate in that program each day. It not only develops English oral language, it develops a sense of what school is is about. Our PTA leadership is largely drawn from people from our C-BET program. Our school site councils and English Language Advisory Committee members come from from that group to a large extent. It's a way of generating leaders amongst our our parents. So and you're invited to our our Fall Festival tomorrow, that's put together almost entirely by teachers, and I mean, is put together by our teachers and and our parents. And but that's just one example of many things that that our parents are involved with. So I'd stop right there and open up to questions.
Let's start with Dr. Noel.
I can only heap praise upon the progress that Cleveland's making. And and I remember when I used to heap a lot of criticism on on Cleveland, so it's absolutely delightful to see it in the consistent way in which it's happening. I want to give you another, I just didn't have things set up to do it. I wanted to see what your actual ranking was statewide for the Hispanics, but I can't tell you what it was for ELs. Not not, I don't, not the percentile rank. But if you look at every elementary school in in California, over two hundred and fifty students, the top twenty-one, the very top score is eight hundred and thirty-seven API for ELs, which is off the charts, and I don't understand it. That's a Bersh Elementary School. I'll play a Dr. Harvis game. Guess the district. Compton. Much-belied Compton, okay? You are you are at seven hundred and twelve for ELs. That's not in the top twenty, but that's that's up there. And and it is, Adams is seven nineteen, you and Adams at the top, and then and then they are, and that's and that is, you have to always look when you look at data on ELs, of what what language. That's for schools that are very high percentages of of Hispanic speakers, of Hispanic families. So it's just terrific, just terrific to to see what you're doing. I I think everyone should beat a path through the door of Cleveland. And it was pretty good to hear that you principals are talking to one another and sharing.
Ms. Parker?
Yes, I agree with Dr. Noel, and I've had the pleasure of being on the campus twice already this this past fall, so that's been really fun to see all the great things that have gone on there. I have a couple of quick questions. One is, one of your smart goals is to increase the days during the summer. How are you going to do this in a better?
Right. Well, we want to, we want to, one, we want to pay attention to, one, we want to encourage kids to be in school on a on a regular basis. Two, we want to, our, we want to make sure that we're monitoring students with problematic behavior and responding to them quickly, responding to their parents quickly. We have support from the district in in that regards. We have easier ways. We have easier ways of, of communicating with, with parents in terms of early on how many days they're, they're meeting. We didn't have those structures consistently in place before and we, we have this actually across the district now and across the elementary schools. We have ways of communicating, telling parents, there's a problem, let's deal with the problem now. We have a consistent process for now meeting and I have my phone go off.
I'll call you.
We'll call me.
Somebody calling to say it's dinner time.
It's my daughter though, so that counts. So I'll call her, I'll call her right back. I thought, I thought it might be Juanita calling me in. Be like her. So we have a consistent way of communicating with, with, with parents and we, we have now a split position, but we have a homeschool liaison and a large part of what they do each day is contacting parents, trying to find-
She really wants you.
-why the father hasn't turned off the telephone. And helping parents too. We have some unique people in our community that, that I could say it over television. Ernie Rodriguez is a remarkable man that, that does a wonderful job in supporting elementary schools. And in our district, I know that if I have a particular family that, that we really need to support, they may have housing problems and they, they are in essence transient, that he jumps right into the fray and, and works with us. So the short answer is we have ways now to work more consistently with, with parents that have difficulties. If we can clean that up, our, our percentage, which are still are quite high right now, I think we can increase on that, at least a percentage point.
Can you speak Spanish?
I do, yes.
The last question I have is budget information and again, I want to jump in on this. Looking at your categorical funding allocated to the school, it's for this year, this current year, and so you have a couple of categories, Title I and Economic Impact Aid that are, your budget is, the amount that you're giving for this year is probably less than what you have in the budget for various things you're spending on. And so I just wanted to hear about carryover and how that worked out.
Sure. One, we had a, we had a late, EIA is a, Economic Impact Aid is, is a bright spot in our, in our budgets in that we had a, a late dispersal of money in May. And so in essence, that became carryover, but we really, we didn't ever get it. It just, it was slow in, in getting, getting to districts and then being dispersed. So with those extra monies or things that we can do this year, I haven't been able to do for a long time. We used to be reminding, you can get in more economic trouble in good times than you can in bad times. So we have to really make sure we're monitoring that. But, but we, there are things that we can do this year that in past years we simply did not have the funds for. So, but in overall, there was an increase in, in Economic Impact Aid, EIA. So there's kind of double good news there.
It was a really big number as compared to the Title I funding, which is usually-
No, it used to be, Title I used to be our, our largest categorical funding, but EIA is, is far larger.
Yeah, interesting. Okay, Ms. Cordero.
I want to just add a couple of quick questions and certainly I want to start by commending you on the progress that you made. Wonderful to see the, the results.
So again, for the record, I want to commend you on your, your progress and the, the results that you're seeing. I also want to look at some of the things that you're doing. I was looking at the, what you're doing with the arts because you seem to have a lot in place in terms of the arts. And I just wondered, is one of those, I noticed that it's listed as performance arts and I'm wondering, is that dance?
Yes, and it's more. The program has, we've called it, we've given it a name, it's called Crescendo. And we looked at, we looked at schools and practices of schools that have achieved high numbers or they, they have high measures of student achievement as, when we use state, state measures. And one thing that becomes clear in many schools is that the strategy is to hone in and narrow down student experiences so that only things that are tested by the state get taught. And we, as a community, we've kind of, we've rejected that, that approach. And really what we feel is that while we have to pay attention to the standards and make sure that students are having success, that they are going to ultimately have more success when they have more and richer and deeper experiences, a broader set of, of experiences. In essence, it's a, it's not, it is truly, I mean, it is comparable to nineteen sixty kind of convincatory ad philosophy and that we, we feel that some, our students don't have, in many cases, don't have a wide spectrum of experiences. We want to provide those, those experiences at school. The arts is one of the ways that we can do that. Now, arts instruction in and of itself, developing human expression I think is, speaks for itself and, and it would be a valid reason for do it. But we also believe that the arts help students in participating in learning activities that are more engaging. Students have to be active participants. We think that that has a, a carryover into the rest, the rest of their learning as well. We believe that the arts are a vehicle for language acquisition for our students. We talked about this, the, the six to nine years to develop academic English. We believe that the arts can accelerate that, that kind of learning as, as well. So our arts serve a lot of purposes and therefore we, we feel they justify larger expenditures. Our categorical funds in and of themselves wouldn't, wouldn't allow us to do what we really want to do. So for the last year and a half, we've been on a, a campaign to, to attract nonprofit monies or donations to our school. So, and Governor Schors Sager helped us a great deal with a one-time arts PE grant as well. But to date, we have, our budget for the arts this year is, is, to date is sixty-six thousand dollars this year that we're expanding in the area of the arts. And what, with that, we're able to have two instrumental, district funded instrumental music instructors once a week. We have two additional instrumental music teachers, so we have a total of four that work with grades four through six, students in, in four through six. We've increased our instrumental music participation from twenty-five students, grades four through six, to this year, about ninety students. We have ninety students in instrumental music, okay? In addition, we have, we have four, what we call fine arts or visual arts instructors. And we have two, let me get it to straight. We have four teachers in either performance arts or fine arts. Two of them are dance specialists, working with students in grades four through six and two of them are visual or fine arts instructors. So our students have two arts classes per, per week in grades four through six. Our lower grades, kindergarten through third grade have one art lesson per week.
Well, I just happened to notice that, that, you know, listed among these are, at least one of them is, I'm sure they all are, but one that I recognize is a very highly respected flamenco and Spanish classical instructor.
Yes.
And I just wanted to commend you on offering-
Alfred Lopez, yes.
Yes, on offering your students not only the breadth of including dance, but also something very culturally relevant to them. So I, I was pointing that out because I thought that was really wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is an impressive list of programs that you have. And to tie that back to the first thing you said, which was the effectiveness of, of time that's used, that it's amazing, all these programs and yet students are going in and out and going back and forth all over and it's all done very efficiently and effectively. And they, just the band program and managing all these kids going to different places and I just want to commend you on that. And it's very impressive to go and visit your school. That's all I wanted to say today.
Well, thank, and, and teacher leaders are involved at every, at every step. Scheduling is not a relative strength of mine, but I have people on, onsite that are terrific at it. So it's having good people and we have terrific teachers.
Well, it's just that the Waterford program, which you have, you have them cycling in there so fast and it's so effective, the way that it works. That is, if you're not strong on, on scheduling, you've fooled me, so.
And our Waterford program is expanding to adults this year. So, so we, our C-Bet program will now have a Waterford component as of January.
I think everyone has made the observation that Cleveland is really firing on all cylinders right now. But I'd like to add the observation that yes, there is a list of activities that you are engaged in for your students, but to me, the, the sort of overwhelming link is that it's all focused on student achievement. It's not just a list of activities. It's all integrated into a focus on student achievement. And I think that's what has created the success at Cleveland. You know, it, I, you know, I keep thinking of that, that silly Gerald Anderson arrow with all the little arrows inside that could be going in different directions and I feel like at Cleveland, they're all going in the same direction as the big arrow.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Right.
Yeah. I know, but we're still behind schedule. You may be done, but it's six, it's time for a break. Maybe we'll take a little bit shorter break than was originally scheduled. So start it again and I know that that gavel will drive people to come back into the room. We're on to the second half of our single plan presentations from Franklin, Harding and McKinley Schools. And we're going to start with Carol Cowan, Carol Navara is from Franklin School. I'm sorry. We were just talking about that.
Not a problem. All right. Well, yesterday, as you know, was Halloween and I think that the, the occasion, the holiday appeals to so many, young and old alike, because it's an opportunity for people to transform themselves, to be something a little bit different. Then it dawned on me that it was really appropriate today that we meet and, and allow principals to share with you how we plan to transform our schools. Unlike Halloween however, a little bit of makeup and a cute little costume, you know, that does a lot of wonders, but school improvement is not as easy. School improvement is an ongoing, evolving process that includes many people, principals, teachers, staff, parents, students, district personnel and the community. So today I'd like to share with you the process that Franklin has embarked on as far as our school improvement process. I am proud, proud to report that Franklin started this process in January two thousand and seven, well before we received our statewide results. On a rainy day in January, our staff gathered to dream big and we embarked on an exciting visioning process that was facilitated by Pat Morales, former principal at Peabody Charter School, where our staff began to envision the ideal Franklin school. Subsequently, the staff was introduced to the seven correlates of effective schools and I'm sure that you're aware of those. And our leadership then, a group of teachers from our school were assembled to categorize those big ideas under the, under the related correlates. And we prioritized them and began the work that needed to be done. It was clear at that point in time, in January, that two correlates were, needed our immediate attention. Those were safe and orderly environment and instructional leadership. I'll explain real briefly what that means. As far as a safe and orderly school environment, it really is about creating a space, a physical, a spa, an environment, both physical and social, that supports our students. So our ideal is to obviously have a, an environment, a physical environment, that is visually appealing. We just installed new playground equipment. We're working on our landscaping and a lot of other improvements associated with just the physical environment. And also, more importantly, the social environment for students, establishing a school-wide program for behavioral expectations. But most of all, our school improvement is the direct result, our, our, our school improvement is the direct result of what's going on in the classrooms. One of my most favorite quotes right now, and I, I say this all the time, is you can't prove anything was taught until you have, you have proof of the learning. And that's where instructional leadership comes in. Instructional leadership doesn't, just doesn't mean the principal, it means everybody involved, everybody working with our students. This year, I think the biggest, some of the biggest changes that occurred was earlier, for two and a half days, I met with each individual teacher for goals conferences and they established goals for the school year based on the six, the six California teaching standards. They shared with me their strengths and their areas of improvement. And as a result, we were able to develop a, a professional development plan that supported those needs. And now we are committed to utilizing our faculty meeting times for professional development. So it's a really exciting time. In addition, it has encouraged me and motivated me to get into the classrooms, to see what's going on and to provide them with the feedback and facilitate conversations around instruction. So on my visits, I do provide them with the feedback either informally, sometimes in writing, sometimes in a bulletin, because I think that the message needs to be heard by more than just one staff member. Although we focused on two very specific correlates this year, many of the correlates overlap and so we're seeing progress in, in many of them. So why is this important? Well, we do have our results now for our state assessments and in our AYP, unfortunately, again, our English learner subgroup fell short. Only nineteen point five percent of our students in the English language subgroup, English learner subgroup, excuse me, met the required proficiency levels. We needed twenty-four point four percent. Next year's, next year, the target increases to thirty-five point two percent, which means we have to move fifteen point seven more EL students into the required proficiency categories. Looking ahead, although we met it in every other cri, in every other group, school-wide in our other significant subgroups, I'm looking at next year's school-wide goals and we will need to increase those if we are to meet the target by nine percent across the board. Fortunately, in math, we were able to meet all of our AYP targets. However, I am concerned about our English learner subgroup in this area because we will need to increase five point seven more percentage of our EL students to meet the new, the new targets. My hope is that we will continue to main, hold steady. We have for the past year, the past couple of years, we've remained steady, pretty steady and pretty consistent in our, in our achievement. We've made slight progress in our API. We increased by nine points. So now we're at an API of six hundred and seventy-eight. Our English subgroup, English learner subgroup increased by twenty-one points to six hundred and forty-six. So that's encouraging, but it's not enough. And we know that there's a lot of work to be done. So how are we going to do this? Well, we're focusing on our English learner subgroup. That's our most significant one. So we are committed to implementing ELD, English Language Development, daily for those students. I'd like to reiterate our, our gratitude for the district sponsored TOSSAs who have worked really careful, or closely and carefully with our, with our teachers to help guide them in making sure that ELD is something that is not left off their daily schedules. I am encouraging my teachers to utilize small group instruction and flexible grouping for our students, particularly our English learners. We do have a large population of English learners, but it is in those small groups that those kids will get exactly what they will be needing. They need to be engaged through active participation and they, we need, as teachers, we need to make sure that they maintain their motivation and are not passive learners, but are active learners. Some of the other things that we are planning to do in regards to our English learner subgroup, particularly in, in reading, is we are implementing the RTI model in our Title I Intervention Program so that about a hundred and twenty students get individualized or small group instruction in reading. So as part of RTI, there's a lot of, there's obviously daily practice and consistent assessment and monitoring of student achievement. And those a hundred and twenty students were, we looked at their, their CST scores, we looked at oral J scores, we looked at students who were heard by the SST team. These are kids that are really struggling. And my hope is, is that if we can move these a hundred and twenty students forward, that we will be able to meet the- and twenty students forward, that we will be able to meet the new targets. I have my fingers crossed and I have complete faith that our Title I Intervention Team, made up of certified teachers, will be able to work some, some miracles. We're also going to be implementing twenty school-wide RTI interventions in math, again, with the ongoing assessments and monitoring. So students are, are given a skill sequence over the course of a week, they give, they're given a skill, they work on it, they're tested on Thursdays, we evaluate whether or not the median student in the classroom achieved the mastery level, and then if so, we move them on to the next skill. So it's a class-wide intervention. We have found that it has proven to fill some of the, the holes that our students have in some of the basic facts, but again, RTI is an intervention program, it is not the core curriculum, it's to supplement the core curriculum. We are planning to implement the Waterford Early Reading Program in kindergarten this year. Last year, we weren't able to do that, so we are very hopeful that that support will be a wonderful addition to our kindergarten program, and then also utilize the Waterford program for our, our most-at-risk students in first and second grade through the Title I Intervention Program. As I suggested earlier, we have developed a professional development plan that was really based on the needs of the teachers. Some of their needs included ELD, writing, and differentiation. So our staff meetings are now focused on providing the teachers with the tools that they need to take back into the classroom. Another one of our major, major, I guess, implementations is Time to Teach, which is a behavioral expectation, school-wide behavioral expectation program that we've implemented this year. We establish the expected behavior school-wide, which allows teachers to provide students with immediate attention but without compromising instruction, therefore allowing them to teach, because many times, student behaviors are a nice little distraction to the instruction. And so our hope is that by dealing with them immediately, effectively, and efficiently, that teachers will have, will be able to maximize their time as, in the instruction. My goal to, is also to increase ongoing communication with parents, parents, talking to parents about their students' academic achievement, but also their behavior, and making sure that we are addressing concerns with parents immediately, and not waiting just until conferences, but ongoing conversations with parents that we have concerns with in the area of behavior, attendance, and academic achievement. What I hope to see happen as far as the support by the district, especially for PI schools, is of course timely responses to our needs and to our concerns. Providing opportunities for mentoring, I've had the opportunity to work with Pat Morales, and I feel that that has really helped me have another set of eyes looking at my school, and I would hope that those would continue to be provided, or at least offered to PI principals. And I would hope that, we had a little conversation earlier about combination classes, and that in staffing, I know that we're very, we were very careful about staffing ratios this year across the district, but I would hope that for PI schools, staffing ratios would look, be looked at a little bit differently, eliminating the need for combination classes, because in a PI school with large, large, or significant numbers of English learners, I think that could be something that we should look at and monitor, and hopefully get some support, so this isn't always the, the, the practice from year to year. This is my plan. I hope that this will bring positive results so that I can report to you next year, but if not, I will have to dress up in my Evil Queen costume, which I was yesterday, and work some evil magic. So thank you for your support, and I'm ready for questions.
Go ahead, Ms. Parker.
I think I'll sort of, page by page, sort of, from the earlier part, one of the things that you talked about on the Student Performance Data Summary is that, and I appreciate the, the analysis that was applied with your.
Better. I appreciate the analysis that was done here. You say that there was a significant decrease in the percentage of students scoring proficient or advanced in English Language Arts in grades two and four, and you noticed some positive things happening, however, in grades three and five. And I recognize, of course, that it could simply be a factor of who those students are this year in those grade levels, but what do you see in the classroom that's different, or do you see anything different between what's going on two, four, and what's going on three, five, that would, that might explain that difference?
When I look at, at second grade students, especially English learners, you look about, you look at the amount of time that they've actually been in the school setting, and so to expect second grade students to be proficient after, hopefully, three years of English instruction, it may be a little bit of a stretch. So I think that, that as they have more opportunity to acquire the language, they're going to be more successful. So I think that, that's why we see positive results in third grade. As far as fourth grade, I was surprised, because I expect, I expect the improvement to, every year, to increase, and to see that little bit of a dip, or maybe not so little, but to see that dip really surprised me. So we're, we're talking about how to go about ensuring that, that kids are truly comprehending, because what we're finding is that many of our primary students are excellent decoders, but when they get to the selections that are required reading for the CST in fourth grade, it's quite a huge difference, and comprehension is a huge issue. And so that's why ELD vocabulary development has to be one of our major focuses, particularly in fourth through sixth grade.
And one other quick question is about, actually, two more quick questions, sorry. One's RTI. McKinley's had it in place for a couple of years now, you just finished your first year of using it, and I'm glad that you pointed out that it's an intervention program and not a core program. It hasn't had much of an effect on STAR test scores as it stands, and I'm wondering, is there anything that you have looked at as a school in terms of maybe tweaking the assessments that are used, or tweaking the interventions that are used, to try to see if you can get more punch out of the RTI program?
Well, last year particularly, in, in, in English, in, in reading, RTI intervention, it was, it was focused on fluency. What we're finding is that, yes, we have students who are fluent readers, that can read so many words per minute, but what we're finding is that they're reading so quickly that they're not able to comprehend what they're reading. So we've, we've adjusted that. We actually, instead of giving, I don't even remember what the assessments were from the previous year, but we decided to go and, and give students individual DIBELS assessments, which were, which are a little bit more comprehensive. You're looking at phonemic awareness skills, you're looking at fluency, but you're also looking at comprehension, which is a huge hole for our kids. Comprehension is, is a major thing that we need to address. And so with these assessments, we are not just looking at fluency, we're looking at comprehension. And so our Title I Intervention Program is using the Read Naturally Program, which is, it is a fluency building program, but it also has a wonderful component for comprehension. So those a hundred and twenty kids that didn't meet the, the reading fluency, or the, or the reading benchmarks, those kids will be getting that individualized assistance daily.
Okay. And my last question is about student, it's like, I guess, student behavior and classroom management, and I'm trying to find the page that it was on now, but it looked like you spent a big chunk of money on professional development. Was it about, was it about classroom management skills for teachers? Was that a school-wide?
It was a professional development day that we have had in August. All my staff was invited, our title, our, our noon duty supervisors, it was two presenters all day long, books, it included, you know, resource materials, all teachers received three books, and it was really a matter of setting expectations, teaching kids appropriate behaviors, because many times, teachers go in with the assumption that kids know what is expected, what, what is good behavior. We say that all the time, behave, you know, that is not appropriate, but they don't really know what is appropriate. So we broke it down for our teachers, and then as a result, implemented a, a system of refocus, where it's not necessarily a punitive approach, it's about recognizing an inappropriate behavior in the classroom. Say a student is fidgeting with his pencil, you know what, I've asked you, we, we keep our pencils down, we need quiet pencils. Teacher may then say, Johnny, it's time for you to refocus. Johnny leaves the group, goes and fills out a refocus form, no arguments, no, no, why are you doing this, Johnny, no explanation, go do it, fill out your little form, when you're ready, I will acknowledge, when you're ready, to come back to the group, you come back to the group, and the teacher doesn't miss a beat. So it's really about, how are we using our time to deal with those little distractions that, you know, that are inevitable in a classroom?
And are the teachers feeling like this is effective?
They love it. This is something that they have been really wanting, and I see the difference. When, when teachers give that one, I, I, you know, I need quiet pencils, there's quiet pencils, and if that's not happening, then there's no second chances. You go, you do what you need to do, you come back. Then, you know, teachers have documentation too for parents, so when parents come in for conferences, which we had just last week, they can say, you know, your son or daughter has been refocused, you can identify what they were doing, so it's very clear, so they could, you know, they can't sit still when we're on the rug, you know, they're having difficulties in the lunch line, wherever it might be. So I, I think it's a really, it's an accountability system for students and for their parents, because again, we need to maximize every minute in the classroom.
Okay. Are you still using character counts, or no?
Yes, yes. This is just a, a different, a different, yes.
Ms. Cordar?
I'm always interested to hear from my alma mater. I had a question because you in your introduction, and I had looked for it previously, that one of the constant challenges is getting parents involved, and getting parents to participate in the meetings, et cetera. And I, when I, when we were talking to Ms. Nyer, I talked about the Padres Adelante program, and I didn't see it in your plan, but she had mentioned that you, that Franklin is invited to participate with Cesar Chavez. Is that, is that part of your plan, that, are you working on that?
You know, it's, it's interesting, there's, there's so many things going on in a school, sometimes it's hard to remember all the things that are happening, and then as a result, I put a note to myself, I should probably include certain, a few other things in my plan, and one of those things is, 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 we do have a, we do have a very strong parent component. We have a C-Bet program as well that is offered four days a week, so we have about thirty to forty parents attending that. Every Thursday, my Healthy Start Advocate, who is one of the persons hired through our categorical funds, has a parenting class, and we have about thirty, about thirty to thirty-five parents attending that as well. She's also offering a month, Monday, weekly meeting Mondays for just dads. So we have anywhere between twenty-five to thirty dads coming in on Mondays to get classes and to learn more about a lot of different things. We, over the summer, there was an eight-week police, Citizens Police Academy, where we had eighty parents attend, and they graduated, we had a wonderful ceremony with the Chief of Police and his officers, a big dinner, and it was fabulous. Again, it was what parents wanted, and so we really tried to gear our parenting, our, our parent meetings towards things that we feel would really benefit them. I was approached earlier this year by Padres Adelante, and I, we already were, I felt like we were already offering so many things to our parents, and I didn't want to lose their interest, because again, just like professional development, it has to come from within. And so this wasn't, you know, how does a school system work, wasn't necessarily their highest priority, but we have maybe, I think Eva was telling me about six parents that have been attending Padres Adelante. So we're hoping that, that little base will create a momentum so that we can encourage more participation, or have our own group. So I think we have a relatively strong parent group. We obviously need to get more, more involvement, but I think we do offer plenty of opportunities for parents to learn more about community resources and how to help their children.
Great, thank you. I actually would like you to include all of that in your.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that was useful information. Thank you. The other question I had was about the amount that you have identified for providing translation services for Spanish-speaking parents at parent-teacher conferences, and you list a thousand dollars, and I was wondering, is that the total that you have, or is that just the amount that's used from?
That's the total.
From this, that's the total.
That is the total.
And how many hours does that represent?
It's ten dollars an hour.
Oh, okay.
So it's really, it's a cheap service.
I was being more generous, I was thinking that it would probably cost more than that per hour.
No, it's, it's ten dollars an hour, and we usually get instructional assistants or former employees that, you know, have the ability to, to translate the information on a report card, because it is, it is highly academic language that we want parents to get.
Well, that brings up the question, because one of the reasons I was thinking that it was going to be a higher hourly rate, is because I, maybe I misunderstood, but I was thinking that this would be confidential information, and so it would need to be a confidential person, or somebody, a person with confidentiality training or whatever to, who did it.
I would say all of our translators are already employed by the district at our school. One, I know in particular, used to work for our school district, she doesn't anymore, but she, you know, she's the only one that's outside that comes in to do the translating. So it is pretty confidential, but again, I think it's just important that parents get the appropriate information.
Oh, I.
And, you know, and not all my teachers are bilingual, so that's why the number is not so high, because I do have a large majority of teachers that can do their own translation at their own conferences.
That was, I'm glad you said that, because that was a question I meant to ask too. How many of your teachers are bilingual?
Well, if you, if I had to say truly bilingual, you know, because some people might say that I'm bilingual, and I don't consider myself truly bilingual, so I, I would say probably about half my staff can get by in Spanish, can, can articulate a good thought to a parent, you know, a complete thought to a parent, so I would say about half.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm interested in the ELD program, that we're, we're trying to put so much focus on that, and I want to see how it, how that happens in the school, and what actually results, and if you could just give me an example of some difference that you see, or something that in a classroom, or just to, to sort of highlight that.
Well, I, one thing that I, I see that's very apparent right now is the teacher motivation. I had one teacher approach me after school one day, and she said, oh, I wish you had been there, it was such a great day, I loved teaching this lesson. And I think it's allowing teachers to do what they used to do, but they didn't feel like they had liberty to do, because with the regimented English Language Arts Program and the, the real intense focus on, on, on reading, writing, and math, they kind of got away from this kind of approach, and I think ELD has allowed them to be creative, to allow children to do more of the talking as opposed to being so teacher-directed. So I think, one, I think it's built a huge motivation to our teachers. They're excited about ELD, so kids are excited, and they're, they're speaking. And the other thing that I see that's really positive is teachers collaborating together. You know, I, my kindergarten team, for example, assessed all of their kindergartners to determine the, the, the language levels of each of the students. Then they divided the students according to the levels, and so one teacher takes the, the lowest levels, another teacher takes the middle level, and then two other teachers, I have three kindergarten teachers, full-time kindergarten teachers, I have a K-one combination, but she's not part of this team because of her K's, or her first graders. So they, the three of the teachers divide their kids up. We also have a newcomer teacher that takes a group, so it lowers the, the ratio, because, you know, smaller groups, more opportunities to, to speak, and that's what ELD is all about. It's about having children use the language, not about paper or pencil, it's speaking, talking. And so my teacher- And so my teachers have, have collaborated to work with these students, and they're, they're seeing the results. And so I think, two things. Teachers are motivated and engaged in teaching ELD, and I think that's a huge, huge benefit for, for students. And that they're, they're really looking at levels of kids and working together to best meet the needs of all this diverse group, even in kindergarten. So I think those are some of the positives that have come out of it.
That was helpful, thank you. Dr. Rall?
I'm looking through, I'm just trying to relate the money.
Okay.
With the goals. And then clearly, I see that you've got the biggest bucks going for English Language Arts and second for English Language Development. And I see very little for math. And then I look at the back of the test scores and think, oh, okay. Your biggest problem in math is just the English learners. And, and I gather the rationale is that you're going to get the English, you're going to get math for English Language learners by teaching them English language. And that all makes good sense to me. But I guess, I guess I have some questions about whether math relative to these others could be, it might be at some risk to neglect it in terms of, just in terms of the amount of financial support, and I simply make that observation. It would help me, would have helped me to know more detail. So I look here under English Language, you know, raising the CELT scores. Newcomer teachers intervention leaders provide supplemental instruction to English learners grades one through six for new arrivals and provide level DLD instruction, seventy thousand bucks. That's a piece of change, and it just would help to know a little more about what that is. I see the ten thousand for, basically, it sounds like a CELT test coordinator.
That's actually for the administrators of the CELT. We have to pay for CELT administration.
For the administration, okay, yeah. Then when I go over to ELA, why the numbers get even much, get much bigger, right? And it just says to assist in the daily reading, language arts instruction focusing on low-performing students, hundred and forty-two thousand plus seventy-one thousand dollars. Then the next page, to provide students in K-six in need of small group or individual support in reading, language arts, under the direction of the classroom teacher. What's that, thirty-three thousand, thirty-three, thirty-three, and twenty-eight? And maybe if you could just talk about those, the differences between those ways those monies are being spent, just a little more detail.
Okay. Well, as, as you know, we do have newcomers who come to our, our school with no English at all. And so the newcomer teacher, we have two. One of them works two hours every day, daily, with newcomer students. So these are students that have been in the U.S. for less than twelve months, really giving them a very comprehensive program in English, making sure that they have all the basics. Because you have to understand that this is, there's a range of students in this classroom so that they're not all first or second graders. But we may have a sixth grader who comes to our school for the first time and has no grasp of any, of, of English. So this teacher has been hired to support those kids so that they can get into the classroom as quickly as possible and access the, the core curriculum. Now, this is not to say that these students are not literate in their own language. Many of these kids, if they have been schooled in other countries, come with their, their Spanish language skills. That's pride, that's, those are the students that we're dealing with. So they come with Spanish language skills, and it's just a matter of transitioning them over to English so that they can get what they need. So that's one of the teachers. Both of these newcomer teachers are actually taking leadership in the Title I program. And so I see them as leads. They also coordinate all of my CELT testing. So thirty-five thousand dollars apiece, because I have two of them, is really not a lot of money for I, for what the kind, the level of work and commitment that I get out of each of these teachers. That's not even an annual teacher's salary. So I, it's actually a pretty good bargain for me. And the work that they do, if I could, if I could hire two teachers permanently on my staff, they would be two teachers that I would hire in an instant. So they do a lot more than what I put on paper. And again, you know, I could elaborate more and more and more, but I, obviously, I kept it simple. As far as the instructional assistants, or the Title, Title I teachers are working with those one hundred and twenty students that need intensive English language, or English language instruction.
Which page is that on? Which one's that?
That is on page eighteen, yes.
That's eighteen.
Title I teachers. And they, those are the teachers that are working.
Three of them? How many?
No, there are, there's one, two, three, actually, there's more than that. There are, at that time, those were the only ones assigned. I now have five of those teachers, actually six. And one of them is actually leaving for, on maternity leave. So I will have five of them. And they work with one hundred and twenty students. So they have a caseload, caseload of about twenty students. So I am also using them, in this sense, we're using them almost as a precursor to, to, to ensure that, that these kids can make some progress. And if they can make progress, excellent. That's our hope, is that with individualized attention that they will, they will make progress. But if, in fact, they don't, then this would be our precursor to asking for a special education evaluation. So it's kind of a pre-resource model.
And how do you identify these students?
These students were identified through test scores, classroom assessments, oral J results, and SST referrals, which is our.
And that could be any, any grade?
Any grade. It's, it's first through sixth grade.
Okay. And what about the?
And the, the instructional assistants work in the classroom. All of my classrooms have an hour and a half, well, my first through sixth grade classrooms have an hour and a half of instructional assistant time a day. My kindergarten classes have two hours. But because I have five combination classes, I felt that there was a need for support. All of my classes are at the max. I have, all my K-three classes are at twenty, all of my fourth through sixth classes are at thirty. So I felt that those teachers, because they took on this, this assignment of a combination class, could benefit from more assistance. So my combination class, classes, which there are five of, they have three-hour assistance in their room.
And I, I wanted, for this coming year, professional development, how much money are you spending on that?
Well, that is an amount that is required. There's a specific percentage of money that has to go into professional development.
Oh, that's right, because you're a P.I. school.
Yes, sir.
Plus ten percent of the Title I budget.
Mm-hmm. So that is where, you know, that's not an option.
And is there, I mean, a particular kind of, how do, how do you, how do you use?
How do we use it? Well, as I explained earlier, we, I held.
Or how do you plan to use it in this?
We, we plan to use it for ELD. When our teachers meet with the ELD TOCs, if it's on their own time and they're, they're paid their hourly rate, if it's, if they are released from the site, which we're, we're trying to minimize, but, you know, sometimes that's the only way to, to do it. We have to pay for substitute costs. Writing, we have a, a woman who has worked with UCSB script program, coming in and providing five professional development days on Thursdays, which are early release days. She'll be there three hours. So she's working fifteen hours on writing, which I think is key to English language development as well. And again, we had a full day of time to teach, which was the Behavior Expectations, school-wide Behavior Expectations program. So that's, that has been what we have spent so far.
Do you, how much collaboration time do you?
That is something.
Of organized planned collaboration time do you?
That is something that has proven to be very difficult for us. And with the RTI model, last year, we were able to have it weekly with our teachers. So we were able to talk assessment results. This year, it has, like I said, it has just proven to be more difficult. I, my goal is by January two thousand and eight to have a plan in place. Larger schools, sharing a school campus means I have to accommodate schedules based on the availability of other areas on my campus, particularly the auditorium. This year, I lim, I went down from four lunches to three lunch periods, three recess periods to two recess periods, trying to consolidate my students so that I, we wouldn't have so many schedules. Because that, that has proven, as Mike was saying earlier, sometimes scheduling is not my forte. And I really have to look at, how can we do all of the things that we need to do? Because, for example, when I have a K-team teaming for, for English Language Development, and they, they're going to the Waterford Lab, and I need to provide, it's, it's, it can be very difficult when you, you're only given so many hours. And that's something that I'm hoping that my leadership team can come up with some ideas about how we can do that so that we can have all the programs that we offer, the music, the art.
Does money help?
Money doesn't, I don't think it's the answer.
To buy, to buy time.
Buy time.
Outside, outside the school day.
That would, I guess, yeah, that would help.
Because I don't see, I mean, I'm looking at these monies, and I'm saying, okay, well, everybody's, everybody tells me professional learning communities is, is the thing. Everything I read says that there's collaboration, collaboration time. And I think, well, if that's, if that's a major contributor to success, then it's worth spending some money on.
Yeah.
And, and I realize that, at least I know how tired I'd be if I taught in, in an elementary school all day and.
Right. And then offering programs after school, too.
I, I wouldn't mind some extra money.
Yeah. And I, and I think, again, you're talking about all the things that teachers have to do after school, you know, planning for the next day, meeting with parents, organizing and implementing after-school programs. So it really has to be, I, I don't know.
I guess, I guess I'm thinking about, like, weekends, you know, if you can buy a Saturday every so often. Now, maybe, I haven't done the pencil and paper. Maybe it's just prohibitively expensive to, to bring people in for that. But, but it would seem to me that, that it would be a trade-off for, for some of the uses of funds here, if, if it's an important, if it is as important as I'm led to believe it.
Well, it is important. And I think, relook at how we schedule and, and how we can coordinate our programs so that teachers can have that opportunity to do that on a regular basis. And that was one of my, one of my goals in my plan that I did address.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Cordaro indicated you had one more question.
Thank you, and I apologize. I forgot to ask this one when I was asking my questions. And that was, you mentioned that one of the concerns you had with RTI last year was that it focused primarily on decoding skills and that this, and fluency. And this year, you wanted to focus a little bit more on comprehension. And I was wondering if you had, if you could just, like, maybe briefly identify one particular strategy that might be used for focusing on comprehension?
One of the programs that we're using is Read Naturally. Base, they're, the program is select, reading selections, usually about a page, high-interest stories that kids would find appealing. The kids are given an opportunity to read these stories, hear a tape so that they listen to it orally, practice reading it, and they're required to read it so many times, a dozen times. After they read this, and they can successfully read it, not just fluently or fast, but also with, you know, tone, pacing, all that good stuff that comes with reading, then they are required to answer questions, comprehension questions. And one thing that I left out are that, that there are key vocabulary words that are introduced before they actually read the story. So it's very much teacher-guided, student-practice, and then given so many opportunities to read this story so that, that by the end, by the end of their twelve opportunities to read this, that they can answer comprehension questions that are, are very basic from giving me a detail to making some, some more significant inferences. So it's a very, it's a leveled program. So kids receive a diagnostic test when they, they begin so that you can determine what level they need to be at. And then they move forward from where they, where they're, where they're at and hopefully getting them to grade level. So that's one of the strategies that we will be using, or that we are using with these students that are struggling in English Language Arts.
Just one quick question, Ms. Navarro's. You, you talk about using RTI interventions class-wide in math. Is that correct? That seems contradictory to me, you know, to use an intervention class-wide. So each student in the class is getting some individual intervention, or I'm, I'm not clear.
Class-wide interventions work very differently.
Okay.
And it's much easier to implement in math. Basically, students, teachers select grade-level appropriate probes, which are assessments. Probes is the, the, the jargon. And teachers select these probes, determine whether or not the kids are at an instructional range, a frustrational range, meaning they can't.
Right.
Accomplish the task. Instructional range, meaning that with some instruction, they're getting there, and the mastery range. When we find that a majority of the kids are in the frustrational range, that's when we determine that a class-wide intervention.
Okay.
Is appropriate. So basically, what it is, is daily practice, depending on what the needs of the class are. For example, I may have a first-grade class that is working on sums from zero to nine. And so for four days, they practice zero-to-nine skills using flashcards as a practice, and then they act, then at the end of the session, which is usually about fifteen minutes, the intervention is only fifteen to twenty minutes, they take a written assessment, the teachers and the students score them together, and they determine where they're at. The goal for first grade would be to have forty, forty answers, or forty digits correct. At that point, then they would be considered, that they would be at the mastery level. So the goal is to get the, the majority of the students at the mastery level. Once you're there, then you move on to the next skill. So the next skill may be zero to twelve, zero to twenty addition facts. That's just an example. So a, a class-wide intervention is very much different than an individualized intervention.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now we move on to, now we move on to Harding Elementary School. And we are more than a school behind at this point.
I can be married to that.
Okay.
Okay, we have Sally Kingston.
The gauntlet's been thrown.
Harding School.
I'm not going to review the demographic data or the scores. Our goals have stayed the same as last year, briefly, reading comprehension, is this on? Vocabulary, and then number sense in algebra, really wanting to reach at least forty percent of the students proficient or advanced. You'll see in the scores, there's not a lot of growth. In some ways, that's concerning, and for me, in some ways, that's understandable, and I'm going to describe why. We're taking a totally different approach this year, and I want to start with that. The paradigm of Harding, when I got there, is really putting most of the attention on tier three, at the top of the RTI triangle, personnel costs, sending kids out to teachers' pull-out program, really looking at what are we going to do about the students who are most struggling. And what we analyzed throughout the year through a variety of conversations with teacher is, teachers, was what about tier one? What about the classroom? What about what happens in the classroom? And if you remember, last year, I reported to you that when we, we have a reading intervention program that still exists, we had one hundred and forty-two students who didn't know their sounds and letters, mostly in fourth through sixth grade, most of whom were at Harding from kindergarten and preschool. So obviously, some gaps. And the kinds of questions we asked as a staff, what are we doing or not doing to create students who need interventions? And so through a collaborative conversations led by a lead teacher who has a lot of strengths in curriculum, I think that we started to have conversations around, the classroom is important, what are we doing? So here's the, here's where most of our categorical expenditures are focused in terms of the classroom, still continuing all the intervention things that we've had in the past. So I, I won't go back into those, reading intervention teachers, newcomer support, et cetera. We still have those things. This summer, the teachers participated voluntarily in a summer institute led collaboratively by some teachers from Peabody Charter School, they've done this for many years, and curriculum leaders at Harding, and really looked at the core program. How are we going? How are we going to enrich English language arts, so it's motivating for students? We know that the vocabulary in Open Court is vocabulary not in an instructional level. There are words that are typically not used regularly by students, but specialized words. And we know that from the research, teachers learned from UCSB students how to identify the kinds of words students need to know for academic language. We had Bill Jacob come in and train us on Math in the City, which is really a more constructivist approach to complement what we're already doing in mathematics, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. We worked on our new social studies program, but really, it was morning of teacher-led professional development, five days, and then afternoon of grade-level planning, looking to create an integrated curriculum across standards and subject matter that's highly engaging for students. So what we talk about is how do we develop a highly engaging, quality educational program for all students? Not at the expense of a reading intervention program, but I think we had it flipped around the other way in the past. So that's a major shift. And what I say to teachers is, rising tides lift all boats. I don't think that we had a program that was highly engaging. So other things that are happening in the classroom, we've changed our enrichment program to include visual arts and instrumental music. We would love to have dance, but we did not find the right teacher, so we have visual arts. Teachers are committed to integrating visual arts into their classrooms, that was part of the summer institute. All the teachers have purchased literature books to supplement Open Court, so instead of reading an excerpt of a novel, they're reading novels. So in sixth grade, they read 12 novels. If you walk into any classroom, you'll see all students are engaged in reading novels, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, and second grade has taken this to heart as well. I think Open Court works very well in kindergarten, first grade. I take exception with some strategies that are very low-level in terms of engagement. One student reading at a time in a circle is one of the primary strategies, and that's really difficult for English learners. But we, for teachers to add the literature books so that you don't panic, one of the teachers led us through how to really look at the unit. They teach Open Court, just every skill that is taught through Open Court, not in the same way, but they have gone deeper on the content and spending more time on stories. And they're seeing kids more engaged, and it's very empowering for students to have books, particularly students with fewer resources at home that may not have a book at home, or typically go to the library. So they're very excited, and you see them carrying them around. We also decided to purchase wireless multimedia cards for the K through two teachers to complement what QAD gave us for third through sixth-grade teachers. That means that when that purchase comes in, every teacher will have a laptop. One of my theories of actions is that we will get student engagement if we have teacher engagement. And right now, I would say, the teachers said, what are you going to say are the indicators of success, because it's not showing up in the test scores? We have a highly engaged, with a high degree of teacher morale, teaching force right now. I have many teachers reading books. This was not when I came in, right? I was giving them research article after research article, trying new strategies, saying, how come you don't know about this article? And to me, that's really wonderful. Teachers are very excited about their own learning. So the multimedia cards have laptops and LCD projectors. Why is that important? Because they can bring content to life for English learners. They're not going to say, what is a cave? They're going to go to the county portal, pull up California streaming, and actually watch mini-video clips and have pictures. And interestingly, it's been, when I was at Roosevelt, I was very adamant that every computer, when we built the new building, had to be in the students' hands, and the technology integration was much slower. By giving teachers the tools to learn by, I've noticed that the integration's happening more quickly, very empowering. What else? Well, Waterford is in, we're still a beta site, you know, it's a Mac version, so last year was very difficult. All the teachers went to the lab, a lot of technical difficulties. This year, we have a computer lab technician instead of a technology teacher, so there's somebody in there to help the teachers, and that's been fabulous, and there's no more technical glitches. So that's used regularly preschool through second grade. We started a C-BET program this year. We have 80 parents enrolled, 30 to 40 who show up regularly. And with that, we just hired two, we had a lot of candidates, it's very exciting, two babysitters that will be working with Marilyn Zanias from Child Development, because you know we have an early childhood initiative, to really look at those children that are in the babysitting program and to make it educational. One of the goals of some of the teachers in the Early Childhood Initiative is to have, like, a two-through-four program. And I've visited those programs, they have little futons to sleep on, makes me very nervous, it's not my thing. But I think it is important that we maximize the opportunities with young children for language, books, and experiential learning. So that is something new we're starting. And then, we also are hiring a second family advocate that will serve to connect parents to the classrooms. We have an outstanding family advocate that does a lot of work around family needs, kind of like Tier III kinds of needs. But we also have a large group of parents who say, what about me? I'm interested in helping in the classroom, I'm interested in non-free programs, because I'm not the neediest of your families. So this person will serve to help with those parent leaders and get them connected back to the classroom. And that's very exciting, teachers are excited about that. I'll just mention, we're, as a whole school, the one school who's piloting the report card, so that's just an additional, I guess, example of the teacher leadership, that was a teacher decision. The one area that I talked about, which is most directly related to the goals, is reflected in a strategic plan that we're developing. You know, we've had two sessions led by Pat Morales, a visioning session, and now a strategic plan. Some of you have been involved. One is around the core academic program, making it more rigorous, engaging. The other is around enrichment, that goes out to after-school programs and goals for the next three years. Another goal is the Early Childhood Initiative, I'll talk a little bit about some things we're doing there. And of course, the environment. I know there's not a direct relationship, but I think it would be remiss to think that you can solely focus on academics, and you're going to see a lot of improvement. We continue to work with UCSB, in particular, the Center for Advanced Studies of Individual Differences with Mike Gerber. And this year, he has extended what he's done with Brandon School to our school, and that is, they have an educational minor that students have a class, and they actually do fieldwork in the schools as tutors. So they are trained by his graduate students in the small-group intervention that he's researched, which is around fluency and vocabulary, and a very specific questioning technique. And so I think we have about 12 of those students who've come on board. It always starts late, the scheduling's kind of difficult. And so one of the goals is how to help teachers, without an instructional aid in the classroom, to do more small-group instruction. So that serves to model as a practice for teachers, but also to support teachers. We work with him on a regular basis at our staff meetings, he's coming in to have discussions around the core intervention model. And I just want to mention, Bill Jacob comes once a month, and that has been just phenomenal to see, if you haven't seen him in action, to really help us understand how kids think mathematically. So those two things. And then I just want to thank you for the cafeteria. I think it makes a big difference when students have nutritious food every day, and they're prepared for learning. And because of that cafeteria, I've seen such an increased focus on nutrition education by teachers. Every classroom's got something going on around nutrition. And in fact, in a discussion with a grade level today about motivating the grade level and what kinds of rewards, I said, sometimes you have to go extrinsic to get back to intrinsic. And I think I said something, I said, what would the students like? A party? But we're not doing that. And I said, well, a little party? And it was appalling to them to think that I would even suggest. So this is something that really is important to the staff, and we have lots of parents eating lunch every day, and I know some of you have eaten the cafeteria, but it does make a difference. Along with that, we have school-wide recycling, really looking at a facilities master plan for the year, because the improvements in the environment make a difference in how teachers feel about the professionalism of their job and how kids feel about school. So those are the big things. I feel like the approach, when you go down to Tier One and make some significant changes in teaching practice, how people approach curriculum, it's not a quick approach. I think it's more like a slow cooker than a microwave. So I'm not surprised with all the changes at Harding, the changes in structure, leadership, that the scores haven't gone up. It's disappointing, because I think it would really help reinforce this teacher's sense of efficacy. My biggest concern is that if you go too long and these improvements are not showing up in the scores, the teachers are going to feel like, what's happening? And so I feel like good things are happening. I think I've said to a couple of you when you visited, I don't know that there would be another thing I would say, we should go out and add that. I think Robin would say that, and I'll add this, because this is something else we're working on in a different way, is what is the rapid response to students who are not performing? So just by, quickly, by way of history, we had spent a lot of time and energy on our continuous monitoring. Teachers came in with, it got to a point where we aligned assessments to the STAR results, hoping it would be predictive of how students would do, meeting with me with their Excel spreadsheets, that each cell was color-coded based on performance. And really, what I found was teachers felt demoralized. Some teachers loved it, because they felt like this was great practice for the STAR, but we really didn't see students move from pink to yellow to green to blue. We saw a lot of students stay at pink, which is the struggling. And so I initiated a conversation with interested teachers this year to talk about that. And basically, I think the conversation really got back to what I said. It just confirmed that we have students who are not performing, but it didn't give us enough information to identify how to help them do better. And we talked about, one of the really eye-opening things that Bill Jacob does is help kids expose their thinking. So if you have a goal around reading comprehension, and you come with a list of students with threes, fours, fives, sixes, and sevens, that doesn't give you information about their processing, thinking, and where it's breaking down. So this year, what we're doing, while Mike Verlone is working on a project at three schools, including ours, to make the continuous monitoring more effective and efficient, and we just did this this week, which was exciting, I'm using protocols around student work, and teachers are bringing in evidence of success. They're bringing in strategies and writing, and there's very specific, you know, talking points and a structure to it. And I said, to each grade level, I said, how do you like this? They said, well, I'm not spending a lot of time on Excel spreadsheets, which is nice. I already know which students, but now I'm reflective about my practice, and I'm learning from colleagues. So this is something that I think, while we figure out how to get back to the data, is really important, and next year, they would like to share writing across the school. And I think this is a wonderful way to set the stage for trust and having those conversations. Okay, is there anything else? I think I'll take questions, because you'll probably ask me.
I just want to add that we're really proud of the way that Sally Kingston can access the resources from UCSB.
Not very grateful for that.
I want to ask a question about the resources from UCSB.
What if it's not your turn?
When my time comes.
I can't think who, Kate went first last time, so Laura goes first.
Actually, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pass right now, because I want to wait, I'll wait till next year. And I'm looking forward to seeing the results of all this, so.
Me, too.
Dr. Noel.
You've mentioned three times a resource from UCSB, Professor Jacob, in very glowing terms. My recollections are that he is very much a partisan in the math wars, which continue to rage. And then I look at your math scores going down, and I say, are you sure you got the right consultant from UCSB? Maybe you should be talking to someone from Stanford. Their chair was on the other side. Or Marty Charman was chair at UCSB.
I'll tell you.
Who considered that math, quote-unquote, "mind poison."
I'm not completely familiar with the math wars. If I was, I'd probably have a hard time focusing on Harding. I will tell you that this is what I see. I see kids in math doing a lot of skill and drill that is just completing work. They don't understand the conceptual part of it, they're doing the work, and, you know, becomes a worksheet activity, as opposed to reinforcement and homework. Without getting into the battle over what kind of math is right, we definitely need something that helps kids connect the concrete to the abstract. And so those are the conversations I had with Bill Jacob. Our students are lacking the conceptual development in math, and when you look at our number sense in algebra in particular, and you see the kind of work that the kids are doing, they might be able to figure out the symbolic manipulation of numbers, but they really aren't understanding number. And to me, that's a concern, because you would think that number sense in algebra, which is the least language-dependent, would be a score that would be higher. And so several teachers went and spent time in the institute and felt like they finally had some connections with math that they weren't getting at a different level for the students. And the sessions that I've sat in with him, and then Ann Carlisle, and he has a graduate student when he's not available, and I was a math major in college. I want to get in a math conversation, I mean, about that, because I didn't end up with a major in it in the end. But I feel like, from math institutes, I've been involved in two years with Cal State Fullerton, when I taught in San Ana, I felt like it was the perfect complement for what teachers needed. And it's not a wholesale dumping of what we're doing, it's just giving them more tools in their toolbox. And so now I'm seeing the teachers using strategies. I was in a first-grade classroom this morning, and students were able to take handful, two different students, handfuls of cubes, and some of them were going up to 25 and 23, and using greater and less-than signs, but they knew what that meant. And that was impressive to me. And so it's just, I see it as an approach that's different, and I think both are necessary. We cannot leave out the symbolic level, but we have to give teachers a way to help them, help students connect the concrete to the abstract. What we had is highly abstract, but I don't think students had the understanding of mathematics.
Just a couple words there. There are so many teachers in our elementary district that are going to Bill Jacob's workshops on the weekends during, I mean, they are saying exactly what Sally's saying, that they're now understanding math, and they're finding ways to share with the conceptual understanding. And also, the math project that he's working on right now, he's actually on a sabbatical, I believe, or he's working back east. The math that he's been working on and working with our teachers has been adopted by one of the major, I think it's Harcourt Brace, maybe. That's part of their new materials that are going to be, that they're being adopted by the state board in November. And so they'll be on the materials list, so we'll get to see some of that. It's a piece that goes with one of the major companies. So it's being highly, you know, respected at this point, something that kids need.
Well, I eagerly await the turnaround of these scores to reflect this. I'm going to ask you a couple other questions. You mentioned having, or maybe I didn't hear it correctly, did you say that you were having teachers read research?
I have, since I've been at Harding, and the distinction I was making now, I'm chasing after them, because they're saying, haven't you read this book? Haven't you read this article? Didn't you know?
So they're ahead in the research.
Yes. Yeah.
Go back to the ivory tower to catch up. That's terrific, that's terrific. Could you explain what the family advocates do? You mentioned that.
The family, I just revised one of the job descriptions, so I know it pretty well. The family advocates are hired through the Family Service Agency, I think they're at five schools, many of the schools. And the one, the original family advocate we have, they connect families to social service agencies. I think that's primarily what ours works on, helps parents understand their role in a school, setting up parent education. So in the past, we've had sessions around, like, a 10 session, 10 sessions on parent education that was requested by parents, making referrals to the Lions Club, helping parents get glasses, accompanying parents to medical appointments, serving on the student study team. We have our school psychologist, as you know from the past, that we hire additional days, and so that's a team with the family advocate, our site-based counselor, as well as the psychologist. So those three work together. The new family advocate will have different responsibilities, because the first one has all the relationships set up. And it's really, which is what I think is so important, connecting parents to the classroom. So if you help, what does it mean to help in the classroom? I know when, on the parent survey, the lowest, one of the lowest scores was around parent volunteering, and on the, I wrote that in the plan, or maybe it's in my executive summary. And on the student survey, the lowest score was that they see their parents in the classroom. And the response to the C-BET class has been so great, and I have seen a tremendous growth in parent leadership, that we really want to bring those parents into more of the academic core. When I got to Harding, they were mad at me because I wasn't having hot dog lunches. And I said to them, you should be mad at me, because I, you know, the scores are where they are. And so that conversation is over. It's not about the carnival, or the fun. It's not about the carnival or the fun things for families. It's really about academics. And I think that it's so powerful for kids. It's so powerful, I can tell you right now, when the kids say, "Oh, that's my mom's teacher." And I say, in the C-BET class, "Are you practicing English at home? Yeah, but she doesn't understand the past like ED. I'm trying to help her." So it's really wonderful, and I think it will help our students to see, to really see the model of what it means to get an education right from their parents.
Do we have, maybe this is a question for Dr. Sarvis, but do we, or for you, Robin, do we have, like, any kind of standards or measurable outcomes for these kinds of programs? How do we evaluate whether it's really working? I mean, I hear your, I hear anecdotal evidence. I wonder if there's any systematic evidence about the-
For which kind of programs?
C-BET.
For the family advocates.
Oh.
Not a formalized evaluation that I know of. I can only say that every single school you go to and the after-school programs, AOK programs, I mean, everyone, it always comes up without solicitation, that that's one of the most important people in connecting with the families. I think, wouldn't you all agree? Yeah, but there isn't a formalized evaluation.
Do you visit other schools?
Have I, what's the last school I visited? Have I visited others? I've not, the last school I visited was Peabody.
So the answer is yes. Do you, do you visit?
But I didn't visit to visit classrooms. I did not visit to visit classrooms.
I ask because I've been doing some messing around on the internet and looking at especially EL performance statewide. And I think there are some models out there that are just doing a remarkable job. I mentioned the top one, but I forget the top there, some others. And some of them, there may be, I was talking with Robin about this earlier, there are some. Did you say something about Santa Ana? Because I'm a little hard of hearing, I didn't hear what you said. But there are three schools in Santa Ana that are within the top 20 schools for EL, using the API as a measure, schools with substantial numbers of, percentage of Hispanics and a substantial percentage of ELs. And they're all called fundamental schools. Greenville, John Muir, and Jim Thorpe with APIs for ELs only, from 782 to 802 to 821, which is just an exception. And I've done a little, just reading, trying to figure out what fundamental school is. And you'll find it on the internet as much as I know about it, I won't repeat it here. But it just kind of interests me, and I was talking with Mike Vale during the break, that it may very well be that the essence of the fundamental school thing is much of what he was talking about, that really, the fix on this is very whole-school model type thing. I've talked to a principal at one of those fundamental schools, and the answer was kind of like, "We teach the same curriculum as everybody in the district, but it's the school culture, it's the philosophy, it's the whole, it's the gestalt that's making this happen. There's buy-in on it, everybody is on the same page." And you start to hear the same kinds of characteristics of successful schools. And that's why I asked whether, and I asked it really in general when I was talking with Robin, you know, whether it may be worthwhile to identify some models out there. And not, not because they're using a particular program, quite the contrary, simply by the results. Look, my God, you know, they're doing very well, let's see what they're doing. And I have a hunch that you'd come back, having reinforced a lot of things you already knew. But there may be the occasional insight from doing this kind of thing. So I'm not, I just choose to use you as the person I say this to, I really meant to say to everybody, about visiting schools, about seeing what's going on.
I think it's really powerful for teachers, particularly when you don't have as many learning models, let's say. I know in one of the conversations with teachers, they were talking about a student who did something very, at a much higher level on her paper, and then kind of passed that knowledge around the room, and students got excited. When you have a lot of models like that at other schools, it's easier for teachers. So I think going to another school and seeing students who are similar to your school can be very powerful. I go back to transforming a school's complex. So you can go and see to get that sense of, like, yes, they can, but then making a wholesale change where everyone gets on the same page with a veteran staff, that takes time. I mean, we're getting there, and I appreciate you bringing that up because it makes, since I know Santa Ana pretty well, it's like, oh, that would be kind of neat to go, so I appreciate that.
I went, about two, three years ago, I discovered the Garden Grove School District. And, "Oh, wow, look at these scores." So I went down, made a call, made an appointment with a guy, and met with him. And it was about English language learners, because they were doing very well. And I expected to come back, not with a silver bullet, I'm not quite that naive, but with something I could get my hands on. And he gave me about six volumes of something I could get my hands on. It was a total transformational system. He said, "There's no solution just to the English language learner program. It's a whole problem, it's a holistic problem."
Can I add just a couple words here? When I was talking to Dr. Noel, and he mentioned Santa Ana and English learners, I said, "You know, that's the district that started with Susana Dutra several years ago. All of their staff has been trained, and that is the model they use for that foundational understanding of English language development." So that was encouraging for me to know that so many of the schools and the English learners are doing well in that district, because that's where they started, and that's what they're using.
Ms. Parker?
Hello.
Hi.
I'm looking forward to all the great things that you're doing being reflected in your test scores. Fingers crossed, next year. I do appreciate that you see the issue and are not just trying more of the same thing, but are really making some fundamental changes. I do want to touch back on the math wars briefly, because there was a great article in Education Week, I don't know, about 18 months ago or so, about the end of the math wars. And I think one of the really positive things that's going on in education right now is researchers, mathematicians, educators really understanding that it's both conceptual and concrete, and it's okay to have a balance. And that's really the direction that's being moved in. And then I want to speak also about Professor Jacob, who I have never personally met. But he has a long history at Adams. We are fortunate that his wife teaches at that school. And my own sons have really benefited from the professional development that has happened there. And my husband's a physicist, so math and science are really important to us. And he's been in there and seen what's going on, and has been very impressed. But more than that, more than for what happens to our family, it's reflected in the Adams math scores. So I hope that Harding will head in that direction. I'm really impressed with the Teacher Institute that you did. We have Pat Morales here, and I think Peabody has just set a wonderful example right here in Santa Barbara for the Teacher Institute model. And I'm so glad that she has been available as a resource to our district. I think you did it, Monroe did it, did Washington do it this past summer as well?
Yes.
And McKinley, you did it this past summer. I just think it's a terrific, a terrific thing to do if schools can pull together the resources to make it possible. So this was your first time around, and I hope that that's able to continue and that you see that it really makes a difference this coming year.
Thank you, and I just, I know we're short on time, but can I just, I've said this to Dr. Sarvis and to Robin, is that we focus a lot on teaching standard number one engagement, standard two and three around subject matter knowledge and delivery and organization. And because of prescribed curriculum, I think we've gotten away from two and three. But when you have teachers actually making the kinds of decisions they need to make for kids around standards two and three, it's just, one, it's empowering, and two, it's very, it's a great educational experience because they've got to do the deep thinking about curriculum and pacing and all of that. So I think it's been, it's been great. I mean, I could go on and on, I just will say that I feel like the staff is really on fire because of those kinds of initiatives. So thank you.
Okay. I actually had also noted down the institute, and I think it's one of those best practices that should be shared across the district. And certainly, there are enough models out there, Peabody being the birthing mother of the model, that other schools should find it a practice that would be easy to acquire. And dollar-wise, I mean, because certainly we don't have district dollars to pay for something like that, but dollar-wise, it seems like a pretty effective, you know, bang for your buck. So thank you for bringing that up. A couple of questions. First, an appreciation. I appreciated that you included the board focus goals with your SMART goals. I know someone else did it too, but it was really useful as a board member to see it all tied back up. You, in terms of obstacles, you mentioned, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I will, inconsistent policies, procedures, and practices at the district level.
I wrote that? I don't think I put that in there.
I just wondered if you could give me an example.
Dr. Sarvis, I'm sure that's not the page. What's an example of that?
I'm not looking to indict anybody, I'm just-
Yeah, well, one of the, I mean, my, I'll just preface it by saying my dissertation is around districts and organizational learning and how that affects schools and student achievement. So I really see schools as contextual, within systems within systems. I think there's a difference in the sense, in the time of a district, and this is true, this is throughout all the literature. Schools function at a very rapid pace. And so I feel like the more procedures you have in place, that you just know what to do, and you're working on a procedures manual, which I think is so great, you're able to just go. The more meetings, communication you need around things that could just be the framework and not in the forefront. And so sometimes, because that's done orally and not in writing, it feels like it's inconsistent. And I would just say the budget is probably, I'm the one who always says, "Timely, accurate budget, please, if anything, for a PI school." So we've, for example, we spent tons of money on professional development, the Summer Institute, teachers' planning after school, teachers' teaching teachers. I just handed out six more professional books to teachers that they all wanted, more math materials to supplement the training. But I couldn't tell you right now where I am in my budget because it's not all there. And so I like to monitor my budget, I like to spend right down to the penny every year, but it's hard for me to do that without that kind of procedure in place. And the changing numbers would be, I think, a good example. And I know that, obviously, with the two openings in the district and recently, or maybe three of recent times, that that's, you know about that already. But when you want to move forward, and you're working on the kinds of things I'm working on, going back to those details and justifying Excel spreadsheets at home is like, okay, I just need that in place to do the important stuff, being in classrooms and having different conversations.
And we had this conversation last year with regard to site budgets, which brings up the issue of carryover funds. You've had carryover funds this year. Is it simply because you never had an accurate site budget over the course of last school year?
That would be my response, I will show you. I have everything to the penny, like this year. There's $413 in EIA, et cetera, et cetera. Let's say for personnel, you have a PE teacher, and when they're out, you have a sub. So you start to go, "Okay, that's $50 a day over how many days?" It'd be great to have that accurate and timely information so I could go, "Oh, we actually need new goals for the soccer part of the PE program so we can shift some funds." I was really surprised I met with you and the previous Director of Finance and Shirley in May to say, "There's no possible way we could have, how could we have carryover in my hand accounting?" And so that's something that I asked Robin to bring up because I didn't want you to think that we, any of us, to think that we were fiscally irresponsible because I know the idea of carryover is going away, we wouldn't carry money over.
Right, right, and actually, that was why I raised the question. It wasn't because I thought you were fiscally irresponsible, but we had this conversation last year that money in the current year should be focused entirely on student achievement for that year. Great, you answered my questions, I appreciate it. So thank you to Sally Kingston, Harding School. And, you know, I hate to do this to Dr. Carney. It's, I feel like she's always, you know, waiting, waiting, waiting on an agenda item. We have, we had an action agenda after, that was taking place after our single planned presentations. And obviously, we're running over time, but we're also going to lose another board member to another obligation, and these required votes. And we're actually pulling item B2, which was the second reading and approval of the re-opener tentative agreement between the Santa Barbara School Districts and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, based on the fact that they did not garner a majority of votes for the contract. I don't know if you want to say something about it, Dr. Sarvis?
No, that's right. And we'll bring this back to the board in closed session at our next regular meeting.
But the other two items were very quick, so, okay, they will be very quick. So we're segueing to our item B3, the second reading and approval of the 07-08 tentative agreement for health and welfare benefits parity agreement between the Santa Barbara School Districts and the California School Employees Association. And we've seen this on numerous occasions. I don't know that there are any board questions or any board discussion.
This is for action, and it wouldn't be parity if we haven't approved the other one, is that correct?
I agree, I think in the recommendation, we should strike the word parity.
Do we, but we still go ahead and do this even though-
It's just agreement.
Welfare benefits agreement.
Yes.
But we still do this even though it's not a, it's not a parity thing? What happens if the B1, B2 changes in some ways?
The intention is still to increase health and welfare benefits to employees who are CSEA employees by this amount.
There invariably becomes a me-too process. And the portion of B2, I am assuming that failed, was the calendar aspect of the tentative agreement.
Doesn't the tentative agreement use the language of parity? If we're approving the tentative agreement, I'd-
It just seems like we should hold off on-
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Melton.
On B3 as well, and B4. There's nothing in the language on this tentative agreement that uses the word parity. I just want to point that out.
Yeah, I, yeah, on the agreement itself, it doesn't at all.
It's just on the title that was assigned to writing up the particular agenda item.
And I personally would prefer to move ahead with that because obviously, if we change it, it's a parity issue again, and it would just be reflected later. What we can do now seems like the positive thing to do.
It's chasing your tail, it's chicken and egg. You know, you approve one contract, it drives another. You approved a different contract, and it drives the complimentary contract.
Yeah, I can't, I'm not going to be able to.
Okay, and Laura, you're in the same boat?
I just hope we could bring it back after we have that closed session and get to go see what's happening.
I think I have to agree.
Okay, then there's no point moving forward because we won't have any kind of majority vote. Okay, so we will return to B2, B3, and B4 at a future date. So that was pretty quick business, Dr. Carney.
May I ask what time it actually is right now?
It's six minutes to eight.
Oh, it's not 7:47?
No, it's not.
It's, I have about 10 of, but I have six minutes to.
I have six minutes too, as well.
I want to apologize, Dr. Carney, because I have to leave in about 10 minutes, but I would like to hear as much of your presentation as possible.
Okay, Dr. Juanita Carney, Principal at McKinley School.
First of all, good evening, everyone. As you know, we are a PI4 school, and this is a year that we must shoot for the stars. I have told my teachers that the train has left the station, and everyone must be on board. My guiding principle this year is commitment and collaboration, engagement and active, focused teaching and learning by all. You've heard really from every principal that this is really what we are focusing on as a principals group. I want to share with you some of the new practices that we are putting in place this year. As you know, the area that we must target on is our English learners. And in particular, I want to talk about the language arts. We have hired a new part-time early intervention teacher who is working with our EL students. I had a conversation with Dr. Sarvis this morning when he visited our school that in the last two years, we are finding that we are having less numbers of students that are attending preschool as in previous years. And so we, when we saw that trend happening last year, we decided that we had to bring someone in that was going to really work with our students that were coming into the school, coming into kindergarten, really not knowing how to- school, coming into kindergarten, really not knowing how to write their name, not knowing the colors, not knowing numbers. And so, we have hired someone, and her background is special education, which means that she has those strategies to work with those individual differences. So, that is something new this year that we have. We also have found that our Waterford program is working well, but one of the things in the Waterford program, in the lab, if you have to have the teachers kind of monitoring what the children are doing at the individual stations, then that's preventing the teachers from actually working with small groups and targeting particular students. So, we have hired a Waterford coordinator, and her job is to monitor the students' work and to look at specific records, if the students are not, let's say they're not mastering a certain skill in the sequence of skills that the Waterford program is doing. There is a device in the Waterford program that can customize those lessons, and so, a child that hasn't mastered a particular school, skill, can then just work on that particular school for a number of lessons until they master it. And what that's allowing the classroom teachers then to do is to sit in the middle, we are fortunate to have a very large room for our lab, and we have two round tables, and the teachers sit with three or four students and can work on intervention right then during the Waterford time, and when they work with those particular students with even 10 minutes, 15 minutes, then they can go back to their station, and then they can bring other students in. So, that has worked, that's working very nicely for us this year. So, we're happy with that. We're continuing with our reading support teachers. We have reading support teachers. These are Title I teachers. These are in grades one through six, so that's continuing. I mentioned in August what we were going to start to do in our fourth and sixth grade. Has been mentioned before, the open court program, and I've said this to you before the board, I really do believe the open court program develops a really good foundation for the children in phonics and phonemic awareness, but it gets to a point where the stories and the vocabulary are not capturing the interest of the English learners. So, we are continuing with our High Point program, but we've changed the focus, and what we're doing is we are having the High Point level be the grade level, rather than the reading level of the children. So, in other words, in years past, we might have had a sixth grade student that was reading below the sixth grade level, and we would have them in the Level A High Point program, which was grade four. And so, we have to raise the bar this year. We have to raise the expectations that we have for our students. And so, all students are reading at the appropriate grade level High Point. And as mentioned before, I believe was mentioned by Harding, is in between these units of study of High Point, we are also putting in literature. For instance, I visited a sixth grade class last week, and there had been just a short selection about a student, a child in the Dust Bowl, and this was a Level C, sixth grade. What the teacher did with that was to get the literature book, the actual literature book, the whole story, and then the children are working from the literature. And there's just much more engagement in that. What they're having is little reading literature groups, and so, we're having the skills, but we're also broadening the vocabulary and the scope for the children. Because I think also, as been mentioned before, when you have a school where you don't necessarily have many models of very high performing students, then there's, what the students see is pretty much themselves replicated many times. And what we have to do this year is, we have to say, you know what, there's exemplary up here, and this is what it looks like, and this is what we expect you to reach for. And so, another metaphor I'm using is, we have to reach for the stars. So, the High Point program is something that we've changed, because we felt that the children were engaged in the High Point, but the grade level standards were being taught, but they weren't being taught broadly enough, because it was so many different levels of children in the High Point program. So, we've changed that. The other thing that a school-wide focus is certainly our English language development. You've heard about the TOEIC teachers, absolutely, totally wonderful, and all of my grade levels have had one full day of training by the TOEIC teachers, and they're also coming in and doing demonstration lessons tomorrow, no, next week, we're going to have a make it and take it, just for our McKinley teachers. The other thing that we really are focusing on this year, and as you know, we received the QIA funds, and a big part of QIA funds is staff development, and this could not have come at a better time for us, because, you know, it's been mentioned before, and I think Dr. Noel mentioned it just recently, about the collaboration and really the gestalt. It really is the whole school. And one of the things that we did when we had our institute, which we had the last, well, we had it, school was out, and we had the first two days after school was out, that following week. We looked at our academic program survey, and we looked at, you know, the different needs. And one of the things that we came up with was certainly collaboration and staff development. And so, we looked at best practices. And one of the best practices that research is saying is that you need to have a schoolwide focus. And what we've chosen is a schoolwide focus on writing. And we are using the New Hall model, but we are using one rubric for the entire school. And what that's allowing, and this coming Tuesday is going to be our first faculty meeting, where every teacher is coming K through six with six samples of writing, from what they consider to be the lower level to the higher level. And we're going to have multi-grade level groups of teachers, and we're going to use a common rubric, and we're going to score all of the writing samples. And for the first time, we're going to be able to look at writing across the school. We've looked at writing by grade levels, but we have not looked at it across the school. And what research is saying is that you have a tool that you can take and use. I need to use a Kleenex, I'm sorry.
There's a napkin. There's usually a box up there.
Thank you. It's going to be a tool, not only for us to look at student achievement from kindergarten through sixth grade, but it is also a vehicle for us to engage in that kind of collaboration that needs to be done, where teachers are talking about, well, what are you doing, and how did that work, and what can we do? So, staff development is absolutely key for us, so that definitely is new. We went to a fantastic data team training at the county. I had representatives from every grade level and special education and myself. That was where we discussed professional learning communities and that focus on data teams. And we were fortunate enough, the county developed a DISC, and if you recall, in February last, I presented to you our mid-year report, and I presented to you graphs that were handwritten, and then some that were done on Excel. Well, I can finally say, now we have a tool that the county gave us, that we are going to be able to look at grade levels, and the teachers are going to be able to put in data, and we're going to be able to look at graphs for each grade level, and it's going to be a common instrument. And this is something that we are, have in place, the teams are working on, and when we go back to the county in November, every single grade level, we're going to have the instruments, and that's going to be another area for us to collaborate. As you know, if I look, if you look at my data analysis, we totally are at the critical stage. Seventeen points seven, seventeen point four percent of our English learners only are at the proficiency level. We are relooking at everything that we are doing. Are our lessons geared to teaching the key grade level standards? Are we using formative data to assist us in implementing interventions? Are interventions working? Which ones do we need to change? Are we sharing strategies among the grade levels that are producing results? Everything has to come back to schoolwide collaboration. Math, with the twenty, twenty-six point five percent, in all of our subgroups, we made it, we were thirty point four. This was the, our English learners achieved at the thirty point four percent. Now, it goes up, so we can't just say, well, that's good enough. And we are looking at our math, and we're looking at it through the RTI lens, so, and we're also looking at our writing, not just in the language arts area, but writing and math. And it was discussed about conceptual. Yes, that is a problem for our students. And one of the things we want to do, one of our assignments, as we get more into this schoolwide writing process, is we're going to ask for writing samples from math. And the students are going to have to write a paragraph on how they solved the problem. And that's very difficult, not only to do it verbally, but then have to do it in written form. But this is what we're going to expect of our students. The SMART goal, of course, is to, by the end of the year, we have to increase the percentage of our English learners achieving at the proficiency level. We are focusing on best practices, and staff development is totally key. And I also have, am very fortunate to have a mentor or a coach this year, and her name is Carol Johansson. I've known Carol for many years, and she and I are meeting twice a month, and in one week, we're going to be sitting down for three hours, and we're going to start the structure of developing our restructuring plan. And I'm going to have in place a restructuring team. I shared with Dr. Sarvis this morning, when he visited, that I have a wonderful school site council, and we conduct our school site council completely in Spanish. And I was telling the parents, I said, you know what, we have so much work to do this year. We must raise the bar for our students. And I was telling them all the things, and one of the parents said to me, when are we going? When can we start? So, there is a sense of urgency. And, you know, I report to you, I report to Dr. Sarvis, I report to Robin, and I report absolutely to the parents. And I have been very clear about what needs to be done, and I feel that the parents are definitely behind us. One of the things that I'm doing that's been very helpful, talking about visitations to schools, I'm attending the Program Improvement Principals Network, and one of the things that they're doing is there, we had a school presented to us last year, I mean, not last year, but last month, about, that got out of PI and what they did. And so, we're going to have opportunities to find out, you know, not too far away from us, schools that we can go and visit, and I certainly would like to do that. The QIA meetings that I'll be attending is also very nice, because of course, the QIA schools are the low performing schools, and there's Benita School from Santa Maria and Benita High. And so, that's another forum that we have to share about best practices and what other people are doing. So, it's really nice to have a lot of these good ideas coming. So, the technology, as I mentioned before, we also received the QAA, QAD grant, and Dr. Sarvis was just, they just started it, so we didn't really see the full impact. But I agree with Sally. Use of technology for our English learners is fantastic. And one of the things that I want to make sure is that we have the infrastructure to make sure that we have everything that we, that we need to make those laptops and that internet access available for all of our children. So, this is a, this is a critical year, and we know it, and we are going to be working extremely hard. And I'm pledging that the collaboration, as Carol Johansson said to me, Juanita, the pieces are in place. It's putting the pieces together to form that puzzle. And so, what we're going to be doing is to make sure, through the collaboration and the commitment to engaged learning, that those pieces are not going to be a piece over here and a piece over here. But we're going to bring those pieces together, so that we have the gestalt, and I've always liked that word, gestalt, that we will have the gestalt that we need to have to move forward. So, I'm ready for questions.
Dr. Noel?
Well, I really don't, I don't, I was looking particularly at the progress you made, and that's encouraging, but as you say, with the bar going up, it's a daunting task. All I can do is wish you well.
Thank you. I do appreciate that, because I think that my model has always been that the positive, being positive is the way that you get the most encouragement. But I also say that adversity comes to you for reasons, and adversity comes because you need to learn. And so, there's a lot of adversity this year, and I'm ready to learn, and we're going to be working hard. And I, like I say, I'm very, I feel very fortunate to have Carol Johansson being able to work with me and to guide, to help to guide and to reflect back on what I'm doing.
You get a lot of new students every year, don't you?
Yes, yes. We've had, we've had more new students this year than in the past, yes. Yes, we have.
Which makes the whole process more...
Yes, it does.
Since we heard from you recently, it's, you know, we came to a board meeting with Carol Johansson, so I've heard some of this before, so...
Yeah, right, you did.
So, I feel like there's less questions at this point.
Okay, thank you.
A quick question for Robin, and that is that with the implementation of a Waterford program on more campuses, including McKinley, is the Cleveland model the model that's being implemented on all the campuses?
Not necessarily, but you picked up on the fact that this is a, kind of a hybrid Cleveland model, with the teachers in there, working with small groups. It's not exactly the same, but it's similar. At the, in the Cleveland model, they have the classroom teacher, another teacher, and then the computers.
Right.
And in this case, it's a little bit more flexible.
Okay.
We're fortunate, and I was explaining to Dr. Sarvis, we have 40 computers, 40 stations in our computer lab, because we had the services of Skylern through the SES for the last two years, and so, they've left their computers. So, I have two, two classes coming in at one time.
So, you have more teachers in there?
Yes.
More certified staff?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Ms. Parker had to leave, and actually, she left several questions, and one of them is a question that I had, and it has to do with High Point.
Yes, we have scores in 20 and 30 percent. They're not. Those scores are 60 and 70 percent. So, you know, were we doing a disservice to the children before? I mean, this is, I don't want to call it experiment, because we really put some thought into it, but... But we have, we have to raise the bar for these kids. And to, to have used the open court program for our students, that was not going to be helpful because the vocabulary just is not, it's, it's, I think, one of the principals mentioned before. It's, it's vocabulary that is, um, it could be taught, but it's really not used in common speech, you know, as, as common speech. So, we are using the literature, and we are targeting those. Everything's being targeted to grade level standards. But the High Point program, we're not using it as a remediation, and we're not using it as a leveled, a leveled program. But like I say, it, it's, it's what was presented to the board initially, and it was presented to the board that this is our language arts program, and the board accepted that.
Yeah, we've had talks about this. The State Board of Education recognizes High Point as an intervention program. I mean, it, it definitely is. At McKinley, they've had to work a lot harder to make sure that all the standards at grade level are definitely addressed. And, and they are leveled. The A is fourth grade, and it's, that's all correct. At this point, there's going to be, a year from now, new English language arts materials. They're already out there. I mean, they're being shared. It makes no sense at this point to re, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That was another consideration.
Another comment, and this is because McKinley is the only one getting QAIA monies. She remarks that it would have been nice to see the QAIA plans for those monies integrated into this single plan. But you were, you, you were unique, and it wasn't anything that anybody asked of you upfront.
The first year is actually a planning.
Right.
A planning year. And I did, I did mention in August, when I appeared before the board, that we were using the monies, some of the monies were going, a big chunk of money was going to be used to purchase a teacher so that we could have the twenty-five to one that is required in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. I found out from going to the QE, QEIA trainings that some of the schools in the first year, they have to use their monies to purchase portables in order to, to have the twenty-five to one.
Got it.
Fortunately, we don't have to do that. We did have to purchase a teacher, and as you know, that's a big chunk of change.
Absolutely. It might be useful to see that, that budget in a board brief.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know.
Yes, I can do that. I can also give you the timeline on the expectations for the, the funding and how, what, what has to happen in each year. Because we have a chart that's very clear on that.
And then her final question. McKinley has the lowest science scores in the district. How many teachers are participating in the Science Matters Grant? And how is science being taught differently this year?
Well, I'm very excited. We have, we have a science lead at our school, Tracy Schifferns. And then she's sixth grade. And then we have, we have science, they're not called science leads, but I guess they're participants. We have a science participant, really gung-ho teachers in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, and they're very, very active in the, the Science Matters. So, I feel very, very good about that. The teachers in four, five, six really latched on to that opportunity to, to be a part of that. And Tracy Schifferns is, is, is our lead.
Got it. That was the end of her questions. I have no more questions.
All right.
So, I think that's it. But the board members need to approve the single plans for student achievement by these six elementary schools.
So, I move to approve these, the single plans for Santa Barbara Community Academy, Cesar Chavez, Cleveland, Franklin, Harding, and McKinley.
I'm quite willing to do that, but I, in my judgment, it would be very wise to do that when we have a full board.
That's-
If it's, if it makes no difference, because everybody heard all but just a little bit of it.
Okay.
And, and having, having five votes for it, I think is much solid foundation than having three.
I take back my motion.
Otherwise, I would second your vote.
Oh, right.
If that's the case, then our business this evening is-